Good morning, want to call to order the September 26th Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting and want to welcome all of our guests and the folks in the audience this morning. I know we have several presentations, we'll get a chance to recognize some folks and share some thoughts around some very important people and we're going to get to that in just a moment, but before that, we have a few housekeeping items, including calling the meeting order, calling the role established at Quorum, and then a few announcements and we'll then dive right into the agenda. So with that, Ms. Evans, I'll turn to you to make the announcements and call to roll, please.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, September 29th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices.
Okay, thank you. And I don't have anyone sign up on any of the items that are on the agenda, so if you are here and wish to address the board on any consent matter or not on the agenda, would ask you please fill out a speaker form so we can get that noted when we get to those items. So with that, I'd ask you to join me in a Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hello, any items to be continued? And we do expect Supervisor Peters to join us fairly shortly.
Okay, so you do have Consent Matters, items 1 through 43, and I don't have any notes.
Okay, all right, let me turn my colleagues in, see if they have any items they wish to pull off the consent counter. Mr. Serna? Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Frost? Okay. I just had comments on a couple of items, if I could. Item 20.
Item number 20, authority to enter into an agreement with Volunteers of America for supportive services, housing assistance, and the continued operation in the Mather Community Campus Transitional Housing Program.
Okay, just a brief comment, certainly supportive of this item, and I know that this board certainly has worked very hard to find the funding to support this program at Mather. I did talk with the county executive, I think there was a note sent out by Mr. Lake a little earlier this morning in response to the clean and sober policies for this program. I know that initially, when the board adopted it, some nearly 20 years ago now, there were certain requirements, not just for entry, but certainly for the ongoing participation in the program. Obviously, it's been a very successful program. Talking just before the meeting with Mr. Gill and Mr. Lake, I think it's important to get an understanding, you know, what going forward. Obviously, we've made a strong commitment with county general funds to this program to get an understanding from VOA, but also from county staff as to what the expectations are for, one, for entry, but secondly, for participation in the program at Mather. And there were some requirements, we moved away from those because of federal funding sources over the way the money was flowing, but I want to be sure that this board, and again, we may want to revisit it as a board to reflect, you know, current approaches, but that question's been, one that's been out there for a couple of years, and I know, Mr. Gill, you indicated we'll try to arrange a meeting with VOA and county staff, I believe, and...
That's correct.
Okay. And then we can report back to, I think it would be important to report back to the board so there's a clear understanding by all involved, so.
We'll do that.
Okay, thanks. And then just the other item was on item 30.
Item 30, accept GSA responsibility for overlap areas in the Sacramento County in the event that the alternative submittal is withdrawn or denied.
Okay, the, we had a discussion about this a few weeks back, and we're now going to notify the Department of Water Resources that for the areas where there's some overlap that the county, in the event that the alternative plan that was submitted by the central groundwater entity, that we would, at least in the intervening period, stand in so that the state wouldn't come in and usurp any local authorities. I want to just, I think it's important, though, Mr. Gill, that in addition to this board report, that an ongoing status report to the Board of Supervisors is very important, and we know we've had some differences with some of the entities, and there's been a lot of work with county staff and the water forum to address some of the differences, but I think it's important to continue to keep the board updated as relates to this entire matter, so. Okay, that's all I had. All right, and I don't have anyone signed, so anyone who wish to address any items on the consent calendar? If not, then motion would be in order.
Move approval of consent.
Okay. I have a motion the Chair would second to approve the consent calendar with the items as noted. So if nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Okay, very good, thanks. Now we have some presentations.
Yes, we do. Okay.
I think we're going to do them in a certain order.
We're going to take item 42, and then after item 42, we'll jump to item 45.
Okay.
So for item 42, it's the presentation of resolution congratulating the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento on its 30th anniversary.
Okay, I think Brenda Fawn and Ms. Lummer, oh, they're right here in front, okay, good.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a few words, let you say a few words as well, so. Well, I'm pleased on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, we just adopted a resolution that congratulates the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento on its 30th anniversary, and I know you've got some activities planned over the course of the next few weeks to recognize some of the outstanding members of the Asian Pacific Islander community, as you have for many years. I would just note that the resolution does point out that the council was founded, as noted, three decades ago, but with the guidance and direction of Frank Phat and a number of other distinguished leaders within the Chinese-American community, and for the past 30 years has provided a strong advocacy, a strong voice for Asian Americans in Sacramento, but also on issues of importance to this community, but certainly to our state and nation. And we're really pleased that, again, this organization has thrived over the past 30 years, and we commemorate the 30th anniversary, and certainly want to wish the best to the honorees this year. They join a long list of other folks who have received not only the Founder's Award, but other awards for their contributions to advancement of, I think, certainly social justice and civil rights, and certainly matters of importance to all of us, but certainly to the Asian American community here in Sacramento. And I think your Gold Mountain Celebration is your annual event when you come together and bring folks together to celebrate. And so, the Board of Supervisors just congratulate the council on its 30th anniversary, present this to you on behalf of your entire organization, and we offer our commendation, and hopefully 30 years from now, we'll be celebrating your 60th, so.
Thank you.
You bet.
On behalf of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento and also the CACS Foundation, we thank the Chair, Mr. Don Natoli, also the Directors of the Sacramento County Board of Directors, for this recognition, for the 30-year anniversary of the Chinese-American Council of Sacramento. Mr. Frank Phat would have been very proud of his accomplishment. He was a founder of the Pacific Rim Street Fest, as well as activities promoting social justice and a better leadership for the Asian Americans in the greater Sacramento area. With this, we thank you very much for your recognition, and also wishing you for participation in our 30-year anniversary at the Asian Sports Foundation on October 14. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, so we are moving to item 45, we're going out of order. This is the presentation of resolution commending Dr. Stuart Guarini for heroic assistance on the American River Parkway.
Okay, well, we have a number of folks here to speak and part of a presentation, and I would just note that we have a prescribed order, and I see certainly Mr. Truitt stepping to the podium, and we're going to recognize Mr. Guarini today and some of the folks that he assisted on the Parkway. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Warren, we'll move down through it, we'll have a presentation from Mr. Guarini here in a moment, so. Warren, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Natoli and Supervisors. As a personal friend of Stuart Guarini and representing Save the American River Association today, I'm pleased to participate in the formal honoring of Dr. Stuart Guarini. For the bravery and rapid response he displayed reacting to two back-to-back attacks by a pit bull and two separate women and their respective dogs in William Pond Park on July 19th of this year. Stuart, also known as the Mayor of the Parkway by many, did not hesitate to immediately respond to calls for help and was ultimately successful in separating the attacking pit bull from the women, Jerry Bigelow and Robin Gilmore, and their dogs, likely saving the lives of one or more of them. Stuart is no stranger to life-saving. In 1990, while attending a championship swim meet at Jesuit High School, Stuart witnessed the retrieval of the lifeless body of Joyce Michael Flynn by her husband from the bottom of the pool. Stuart realized she was not breathing and immediately applied 22 minutes of CPR until medical personnel in a life-flight helicopter arrived, saving her life. Dr. Guarini is most deserving of formal county recognition of his extraordinary bravery and unselfish response to persons and animals in danger of serious injury and/or possible death. I am pleased to be present on this occasion. Thank you, Supervisors, for bestowing this well-deserved honor on my friend, Dr. Stuart Guarini.
Thanks, Warren.
There's some others following here.
Yes, Joyce next.
Hi, I'm Joyce Michael Flynn, and I want to first thank Greg, Luke, and Bill for inviting me to be part of this. First, Stuart, there are a lot of people who love you, Stuart, Greg, Luke, and Bill for sure, because he has worked relentlessly on this. Hero as defined, one who shows great courage, a person admired for his achievements and noble qualities. Today, I am so happy and privileged to honor a man who has truly earned that title. There are two people alive today, myself and Jerry, who owe our lives because of the direct intervention in heroism of Stuart Guarini. I thought about what to say, and it's very difficult, not because there's not a lot of wonderful things to say about Stuart, but I'm just limited to three minutes, so I want to move on.
We'll give you a little more if you'd like, so.
Okay, okay. But because, and how do you sing the praises of a man who is literally I owe my life to? There's a book and a movie called The Four Feathers, where a British officer, Harry Farvenham, goes to the Sudan to rescue four of his friends. Harry is assisted by a guide from the Sudan, and Harry asks him, "Why are you helping me?" And the guide simply says, "God put you in my path so I could help you." On July 22nd, 1990, God put Stuart Guarini in my path. He breathed life back into me, providing 22 minutes of CPR. Since that time, I have been able to share the life you gave back to me with my husband of 37 years, Terry Flynn, my daughters, Elizabeth and Catherine, and my son, Keenan. This summer, I was able to be present at the birth of my fifth grandchild. There are no words, not enough thank yous, to measure up to what you have given me and my family. Finally, we all know you're a smart man, Stuart, but the smartest thing you did was to marry Joan Guarini. Joan is one of the most gracious and brave women I know, so thank you. Thank you both, and thank God for putting Dr. Stuart Guarini in my path.
Good morning, my name is Danielle, I am Jerry Bigelow's daughter. My mom could not be here today.
Could you give her a microphone? We can't hear anything.
Yeah, we'll get your hand, we'll be handheld just a second here, Danielle.
That's okay, I actually have a very loud voice, I'll try to speak up and not cry.
There we go, okay.
Sadly, my mother's brother passed away, so she is not here today, but she wanted me to be here to speak on her behalf. My statement here today is very similar to Joyce's. Stuart, you are a hero. You are my hero. A hero is someone who acts with courage. On July 19th, you saved my mom and her Australian Shepherd Gus from that vicious pit bull attack. I will never forget that evening after the attack, when I was at home at my mom and dad's house, and my mom was sitting in her chair, bandaged up, and she had tears in her eyes, and she said to my teenage son, "I thought we were done for. I thought we were going to die on that bike trail. You saved them." My mom is the backbone of my family. She's a retired nurse who spent her entire career helping others. And Gus, the 12-year-old Australian Shepherd, he's actually a retired search and rescue dog. He was a search and rescue dog for Yosemite and for Placer County. His entire life was dedicated to rescuing hikers and people. And on that, well, and also, if you Google Gus, you will see that there's an article in Backpackers Magazine titled, "Could This Dog Save Your Life?" Ironic, isn't it? On July 19th, without even giving it a second thought, you courageously put yourself in danger to save my mom and to save Gus, and for that, we are forever grateful. You are my hero, you are my family's hero. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Robin Gilmore, who I also believe thinks you are her hero as well.
Thank you to the board for allowing us to be here. I feel really weird with my back to you.
You can turn this way if it's easier.
Okay.
You can come over.
Yeah, come around if you want, yeah.
Great. Okay. My name is Robin Gilmore. On July 19th of this year, my dog Maggie and I were the second ones attacked by two vicious dogs after an initial attack on Jerry Bigelow and her dog Gus at the William Pond area of the American River Parkway. When something sudden and traumatic happens, I've heard people that have been involved often say they don't remember much about the episode, but I remember a great deal of mine. I remember thinking what a great day it was. I remember suddenly seeing the dogs running toward me. I remember they didn't stop when I yelled at them, and I remember they kept coming. They attacked my dog, all 27 pounds of her. These are two 85-pound dogs. I remember the sense of total helplessness and impending doom, and thinking that this great day was not going to end well at all. I remember just yelling at the top of my lungs for someone to help me as I lay down on top of my dog to protect her. And the best thing I remember is that miraculously, someone heard me and chose to respond seemingly within seconds. I remember the sounds of someone running toward me, someone cursing at the dogs, and I remember those curse words, but I won't repeat them. And then that someone kicking one of the dogs off my dog. I remember getting up with not one scratch and being told to walk up the path as 911 had been called, but I don't remember if I thanked that man or not. Who was he? And who does that? Who runs towards two vicious dogs? I know he's here today, and this is my opportunity to publicly thank him for putting his own health in serious jeopardy to come to the aid of his stranger and her dog. The two people that spoke in front of me have already used the definition of hero. Mine's out of Webster's dictionary. I'm going to repeat it again because it's worth repeating. It's one that shows great courage and is regarded as a role model or an ideal. To me, it is simply a person that puts himself in harm's way to help someone else. Stuart Guarini, you are that definition. What you did should be held up as an ideal and a standard for others to emulate. Though to the rest of you, if there's a takeaway in this, remember to be there for someone in need, in whatever capacity that involves, large or small. You never know when a great day can suddenly go bad. If it hadn't been for the Mayor of the American River Parkway, my great day could have ended up very badly indeed. Mr. Guarini, I will forever remember your selfless act of courage towards me and my dog on July 19th, 2017. So on behalf of Maggie and I, I say with heartfelt and lasting appreciation, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Stuart, we're going to invite you to the podium if you would be so kind to join me.
We're going to give you a chance to say a few words. And so, let me do the presentation, and then I'm going to let you take it from there. So I think the words certainly embodied in the resolution we have this morning were said very eloquently, very heartfelt, and I think with tremendous amount of appreciation and love, and I think, again, tremendous feelings for your intervention in situations that could have been very, very tragic. And to hear from folks, you know, about, again, your ability to, in the situation, to act very quickly, but certainly to intervene to save lives and more tragic outcomes is, it really is, I think, a portrayal of someone who is a hero, may not, you know, I mean, not what you start out to be, but obviously, folks viewing that way, view you in that way. And so, I'm not going to go through all the wherases, because it's been much better said, but I think important to note that individuals who you may or may not have known were in need of assistance and help, and you acted quickly, saved lives, and saved very tragic circumstances from happening, and that's, again, your humanity, but I think your ability to respond quickly and your concern for others, and so you're, you know, a peril to yourself. I mean, that's, I think, also noted, certainly as Joyce and those that spoke on behalf of Jerry spoke here this morning, again, is with deep appreciation. And so, the community recognizes you for that, and certainly, your good friend Greg Lucanville had a hand in this. I want to note that he was very instrumental in, I think, calling attention not only to your efforts, which were reported in the news, but I think to why we're here today. And so, I'm just going to conclude with the now therefore, which says that this Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, we want to honor and certainly commend you, Stuart, for your heroic and selfless life-saving efforts while helping preserve and certainly protect the safety and sanctity of both the users, but certainly the Parkway itself, and for your concern for other people and their pets and animals. And today, in recognition of that, this day, September 26th, 2017, we are going to proclaim this day as Stuart Guarini Day in Sacramento County.
You got your own name, buddy. So with that, Stuart, you're welcome to add some words.
Thank you very much. I'm really speechless, and...
Come on, now, Joe.
I know Stuart wants to thank you all for this honor. He truly is my hero as well, and I'm honored to be married to a courageous man who always knows the right thing to do. Thank you.
And again, in a few words, you certainly said a lot. I think, obviously, the emotions in this room run pretty high, but for a good reason, a lot of love and respect and thankfulness, and so we, a great deal of appreciation. Stuart, thank you so much, and again, enjoy the rest of the day. It's Stuart Guarini Day in Sacramento County. Okay, Madam Clerk, we're going to recognize another individual as well, so.
Yes.
Call the next item, please.
Lovely day today. Okay, so item 43 is the presentation of resolution in memory of Michael Turner.
Okay, I'm going to invite Michael Morris to come forward, and I know we have friends and family members of Michael, and we have a presentation, and we'll start with Mr. Morris, and I think we have a couple of other speakers as well, and then we'll certainly invite anyone else who would like to weigh in to do so also, so.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and members of the board, and thank you so much for the opportunity to honor Mike Turner, a very special employee who passed away earlier this month. Mike was a respected 43-year employee of Sacramento County. He started at the county in 1974 as an administrative student trainee in the Public Works Department, and over the years, he progressed through the ranks to become the Chief of our Real Estate Division. Mike was a special individual, whether he was negotiating convoluted real estate contracts, and Supervisor Natoli, you may remember one or two of those.
Thank you.
Or coaching his staff through the complexities of real estate law. Mike was a dedicated leader and mentor. And Mike loved to travel. Even at a very young age, he was an avid traveler and sports enthusiast, whether it was riding the bike trails... I want to make sure we see all these. Or traveling in the lap of luxury. How be it known that that was a cardinal rule of Mike Turner, is he would never travel in a pedicab that did not match his shoes, so. And Mike loved spending time with his family. He spent many a weekend up in the mountains, biking, hiking, and skiing with his wife, Dorothy. But Mike also loved his job, and he loved his staff. Heck, you would even, you would even find him cooking breakfast for them occasionally. And the only thing that we found that Mike really couldn't do was cut cake. You kind of see this little mess over here, and you can kind of even see it in his face. He said, "Yeah, yeah, I know, just, you'll love it, eat it, just, you'll like it." Right now, I'd like to invite for another perspective on, from one of Mike's coworkers, I'd like to introduce John Rocha, who's the, our Leasing Section Manager. Mike or John?
Thanks, Mike. Good morning, John.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Board members. My name is John Rocha, and I've been a member of the County of Sacramento for 12 years, so I've had the privilege of working with Michael Turner for the last 12 years. As you may deduce, at 43 years with the county, he certainly was a dedicated, knowledgeable, and supremely experienced member of the county. But what you may not know is, he balanced his leadership with a playful side and demeanor, with a great sense of humor, and so, if you don't mind, I'd like to recount a story to that end. I'm of Portuguese descent, and a few years ago, Portugal was playing in an international soccer tournament, and they were doing quite well, to the point where I may or may not have been walking around the office with a little extra pep in my step. And so, ultimately, Portugal was bested, and Spain won it all. So when I returned to work, I find this very large Spanish flag hung on the outside of my cubicle as a greeting and a welcome back, and so... And so I knew that wherever Michael Turner was at that particular moment, he was having a hearty laugh. That particular flag stayed up on my cubicle for a good two weeks, so he milked it for all that it was worth.[611.23][611.23](LAUGHING). And also, as a balance to that playful side, he was incredibly knowledgeable. I mean, the right-of-way experiences that this gentleman had gained over a 43-year career, I mean, you can only imagine. Taking a drive with him, he would illustrate the various corners and intersections and roadways that he had a hand in beautifying. And so although we may have lost a very valued member of our staff, I believe that his impact with the county will continue on. And so with that, we are pleased that his family could join us in our tribute to this special man. But before we present the county resolution, I would like to introduce Michael Patterson. Michael is the Professional Development Chair for the International Right-of-Way Association Sacramento, Chapter Number 27. Michael will present Mike Turner's SRWA professional designation plaque to his family.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning. As John said, my name is Mike Patterson. I'm the Professional Development Chair of the Sacramento Chapter of the International Right-of-Way Association. I also had the privilege of working with Mike Turner for over 20 years, the past 20 years. I'm an appraiser, and I do a lot of work for Mike and his staff at the county. The International Right-of-Way Association is a professional member organization comprised of nearly 10,000 global infrastructure real estate practitioners from over 15 countries around the world. The IRWA has served professionals who acquire, manage, and transfer land rights needed for building and maintaining energy and transportation infrastructure. The Senior Right-of-Way Professional, SRWA, is the most prestigious professional designation granted to those right-of-way professionals who have achieved professional status through experience, education, and examination. While an SRWA professional may be a specialist in one area, they must also be familiar with all disciplines associated with the right-of-way profession. The SRWA designation is the only designation reflecting evidence of professional accomplishment in the right-of-way profession. Mike Turner had recently been notified that he had met the requirements for the designation and was due to receive this plaque next month. Not only was Mike Turner a right-of-way professional that had the experience and education necessary for the designation, but he was also a leader at the County of Sacramento Real Estate Division. Under his leadership, nine other individuals at the Real Estate Division recently achieved this designation, and several others today are still working towards that designation. It's my honor today to present the SRWA plaque and pin to Dorothy Turner and Eric Turner in honor of Mike Turner.[778.32][778.32](APPLAUSE). My condolences to both of you, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's a wonderful person.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for being here this morning.
And at this time, Superintendent Natoli, if you'd join us in presenting the resolution for Mike Turner.
Well, today, this morning, we celebrate certainly the memory, but the service of someone who was a cherished friend, obviously, a husband, a father, a community member who cared very deeply, not only about his work, but obviously about those he loved the most and were closest to him. And I'll just say that in the resolution, we certainly point out some of the achievements and accomplishments throughout his career, but this resolution and the few wherés contained don't do justice to a 43-year career of public service. And I did have the good fortune over my, I had a little short-term service, I'm nearly 39 years with the county, and so kind of felt like as a junior to Mike as far as his service. But he really, I think, demonstrated what is best about those who make profession and a life of serving others, certainly in the public realm. And I can tell you that he was always a gentleman, he was professional, he was someone who cared very deeply about doing the work, doing it correctly, but also he understood not just the, you know, parameters of right-of-ways and public areas in doing the task, but he also had a real heart for, and understanding for what others are going through. You know, the public good and serving that and, you know, building roads and improving waterways and acquiring sites for public buildings and so forth, all has a very good purpose. But oftentimes, those lands and properties are privately held. In his work, I can tell you on many occasions, and as Mr. Morris alluded to, where he would take the time to sit in someone's kitchen, to go in meetings sometimes with a lot of redundancy, I know certainly in my office, I'm sure with other members of the board, to try to find a solution that obviously represented the public interest, but also would help folks with the fact that they were going to give up a portion of their property in some cases, and give it up in the sense they'd be compensated for it. But also sometimes people's homes were involved. And I had a note from one of his former colleagues in the Department of Transportation who were called very clearly, a situation a number of years ago when there was a widening of Calvine Road, and the house was very close to the road and the, and the, two people that resided there, the Roses, were pretty distressed about what that was going to be as far as the impact on their lives. And I know Michael, working with our Department of Transportation, sat in their kitchen, he sat with others, certainly on the county side of the house, and he found a solution that was one that helped them to relocate, preserved, I think, their interests, certainly their stake in the property, but I think their peace of mind. And that was just one example, and I know there were countless times, and I would call him from time to time, and I'm sure others, for advice. And it wasn't always serious business either, because he had that sense of humor, you kind of see it in the, the cutting of the cake there a moment ago, but I know that if you got him to laugh, and I'm sure you've recalled it, Dorothy and Eric, that he would get to kind of giggle, you know? He had that, you know, about him, it was kind of a wry giggle, but it was one where he really did, he had that sense of humor that I think, you know, was part of that inner brightness shining very, very brightly for those that knew and loved him. And so we honor his memory, and I would just tell you, I was as shocked as anybody when I heard of his passing. And I know that he, we talked from time to time, his father was a longtime county employee, and the legacy in the family, the Turner family of serving this county and its people, something he was very, very proud of. And I would just say, there's a deep appreciation certainly in this room, but in the county of Sacramento, and you can both take away with great pride, obviously, that your husband and your father served this community very honorably, very professionally, in a way that I think served the interests of all the folks of the county, but certainly those oftentimes were in distress and certainly in need of guidance and counseling, but all, counseling in the sense that of how you could go about, you know, working with the county, a big organization, and he was good at what he, what he chose as profession. And I know he rubbed off a lot of goodness on certainly all of us who knew and worked with him. So on behalf of the county of Sacramento, in a small token of, certainly of our appreciation and memory of a fine, fine man, a gentleman, someone who was good to others, was well-loved, well-respected, and will remain in the hearts and minds of folks in this county, I'm sure, for many generations to come. So thank you so much.
Eric?
Thank you.[1111.42][1111.42](APPLAUSE).
It's up to you, Dorothy.
Okay.
If you'd like to.
I, all I can say is that I know he would completely, he would be very proud of this because he was very proud of all the work he did in the county. He, he loved it, he, it was his home, he, and so he would, this would make him, he'd be very proud of this. Thank you so much.[1145.58][1145.58](APPLAUSE).
I just wanted to thank Chairman Natoli and the board for doing this and the Department of General Services, it means a lot. And, you know, my dad, I think everybody who knew him and worked with him knows that he was a hard worker, but he was also a very good father, and just wanted to say thank you guys for honoring his memory.
Thank you.[1171.15][1171.15](APPLAUSE).
And then if anyone else would like to say a few words, I know you have, you have colleagues and friends here, certainly you need not, but you're welcome to, and this is an opportunity certainly to offer some recognition to the family if you'd like to. So if there are any colleagues, feel free to come to the podium. I know there's a memorial service this Saturday, I think that was, the announcement was up that showed a moment ago, so people certainly are, I'm sure, invited to attend that and to support the family. But if there's anyone here that would wish to offer a few comments, you're welcome to do so right now.
Good morning. Thank you for letting me speak. Mike was my supervisor for many years, and I enjoyed thoroughly working with him, and he, he was a, as many have said, a gentleman, a scholar, a real knowledgeable person about rights of way, and a good friend and mentor. And I feel very honored that I was able to work with Michael. He certainly, it was so interesting, I was reflecting earlier, that anytime we'd come down here to this building or buildings surrounding, you know, we'd walk from the parking lot, et cetera, and almost every time, there was somebody that he knew, you know, just walking around, and we'd have a conversation for a moment or two, and it was just so nice. He knew people all over the county, it was very helpful. And I, again, so pleased that I was able to work with Mike and have a friend in Mike, and I know how much it would mean to have all of us here in his honor, and that he would be very proud of his accomplishments, and very proud of his family and their accomplishments. And I really would be honored to, you know, call him my friend and call him my mentor and division chief. So thank you, Board.
Thank you so much for sharing. Thank you.[1320.42][1320.42](APPLAUSE). Anyone else? Okay, then with that, I know we share many good thoughts and much love and for the, for the family, Dorothy and Eric, and to your daughter and sister Carrie as well. So we, well, today, we'll also adjourn our meeting in honor of Michael as we adjourn later this afternoon. So we recognize him and we thank him, and we thank you for being here, for all those that were his friends and colleagues here at the county family, but certainly his immediate family. So thank you for being with us here today. Thanks. Okay, thanks.
as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Okay, Julie Bernhoff's here.
Good morning. Good to see you.
We do, as we have for many years, this Board is recognizing and proclaiming the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we did so in the adoption of this resolution earlier this morning. And to me, with me is Julie Bernhoff from the Women Escaping the Violent Environment, and I'll ask her in a moment to offer a few words as well. And I think the importance of recognizing the month, but certainly I think the challenges and the problems that affect certainly people who are in relationships where domestic violence is present, the impact upon families, the individuals, children, and it certainly cuts across all socioeconomic, educational, and religious occupational segments of our society. So no one is a stranger to it. And I think the importance, though, of this month is to call attention to the efforts here in this community, certainly by Weave and other organizations that provide support, counseling, a safe place for folks that in large part are women and children escaping this, but I'm sure there are situations where you have men as well. But one of the things that Weave has done, it being now the most long-established and most comprehensive provider of domestic violence services, Sacramento County, over 10,000 crisis calls a year come into Weave, and maybe there's an updated number relates to that, and they respond to those calls all hours of the day and night, and certainly weekends as well. They also provide more than 19,000 bed nights of confidential emergency shelter for those that are trying to avoid and to get away from the offenders. And have really continued to serve in so many ways, the folks who, again, are at great disadvantage, are very vulnerable, and Weave is there to support them and has been for many, many years. And want to recognize that work, but certainly call attention to domestic violence, the ability for this community certainly to help folks coping with, you know, situations of assault, domestic violence, and sex trafficking, which we don't tolerate in this community, but we know that it goes on, and we do our best, certainly working in support by this Board, of law enforcement, of social service agencies, and certainly our partners in the nonprofit community, to help folks address those situations and to have a better situation in their respective lives. And so we do proclaim the month of October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month here in Sacramento County, and encourage people throughout the county to partner with organizations such as Weave and others in working to bring an end, hopefully someday, to domestic violence in our community. So with that, Julie, I'll present this to you.
Thank you.
And thank you again for your organization's service to our community, so.
Just wanted to very quickly thank the supervisors for your continued support, drawing attention to it, also acknowledging that there may be one month that we issue a resolution for, but you're all very aware, this is 24th, 7, 365, and you have invested in that, and it is greatly appreciated. Thank you.[1631.23][1631.23](APPLAUSE).
Okay. With that, then we'll move to next portion of the agenda, and we have some timed items. So with that, I'll go ahead and call Item 46, please.
Okay, so you are acting as the Sacramento County Tobacco Securitization Corporation for Item 46, Approval of Previous Meeting Minutes, Adopt Fiscal Year 2017/18 Budget, and it's the Presentation of the Fiscal Year 2016/17 Audited Financial Report.
Good morning, Kristin Yates County Executive's Office. So every year on the first Tuesday in October, the Tobacco Securitization Authority of Northern California and the Tobacco Corporation Board convene to meet the annual meeting, I'm sorry, convene for the annual meeting requirement. Since the Board did not have a normal meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday in October, we scheduled these meetings for today, September 26. The Tobacco Authority met this morning, and this item meets the annual requirement for the Tobacco Corporation. So the annual report before you includes information and the following recommendations: Approval of Last Year's Meeting Minutes, The Adoption of the Fiscal Year 17/18 Budget, and a Receive-and-file of the June 30, 2017 Audit. Representatives from Departments, the outside auditor, and myself are here to answer any questions should you have them.
Okay, thanks, Kristin.
You're welcome.
May I ask Board members questions of Kristin on the report? Okay, we have a motion to approve, seconded. Just one question, have we had any success in our outreach to fill the vacancy that's been on the Board for now many years, or several years anyway?
The application request is included in the agenda today, and I have not received any to date, so we're hoping.
Okay, so maybe our county executive used outreach through...
I've tried.
Have you?
And Flo and I have been working on that as well.
All right, very good, thanks. Okay, nothing further. I don't want time to speak on Item 47. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
For Item 47, it's the State of Agriculture in Sacramento County based on the 2016 Cru... For item 47, it's the State of Agriculture in Sacramento County Based on the 2016 Crop and Livestock Report.
All right, invite Julie Jensen. I know we have Bill Burr from the Sacramento County Farm Bureau is here, and I think other members from Julie's office. So, it's your opportunity to give us the crop and livestock report, tell us what's going on agriculture in this community, and anything else you want to add. Julie, good morning.
Well, I didn't realize I was going to be here on such an emotional day. I got pretty choked up there. You guys have pretty exciting jobs down here. Well, good morning, Supervisors. I'm Julie Jensen, Sacramento County Agricultural Commissioner, and I want to thank you for allowing me to join you this morning and share with you the state of agriculture here in Sacramento County. I'd like to start by thanking you for the support that you've shown for our department, and also for the agricultural industry here in Sacramento County. Although we have come out of the drought, agriculture continues to face challenges, but with your help and support, I'm sure that we will persist in providing Sacramento, California, and the world with the high-quality agricultural commodities that we have provided for many years. So, the timing of this report is most appropriate, as we have just completed a week of celebrating our status as Farm-to-Fork Capital. Our department represented Sacramento County in the Farm-to-Fork Festival this past Saturday, and I was just really encouraged to see so many people that are interested in where our food comes from, and also in protecting that source. So, as I usually do, I'm going to start with a look back at the past 10 years, just for a little bit of context. So, somewhat surprising is the fact that although in the production year of 2016, we were still in the drought, it proved to be our highest-valued agricultural production to date. We actually had $507,640,000 worth of agricultural production. And I'll explain the reason for this a little bit further into my report. So, my report today is based on the 2016 Crop and Livestock Report, and you have copies in front of you. The dollar figures are based solely on the farm gate value, and they don't reflect the costs that go into the production of these agricultural commodities. They also don't reflect any of the ancillary economies that are affected by our agriculture, such as processing, transportation, labor, and production inputs. But before I go any further, I'd like to recognize and thank my staff that worked so hard on putting together the 2016 Crop Report, Chris Flores, my Chief Deputy, Deputy Kevin Martin, and Senior Agricultural Standards Inspector Laura McCready. They worked really hard on this. Last year, Supervisor Natoli asked that we step up the crop report so that it was more readable and interesting to the public, and I hope that you're happy with the results, and will continue to bring more stories and insight into the people who produce our food. Okay. Our leading commodities remain fairly stable, with the exception of nursery stock moving up into the top five and replacing aquaculture, and rice falling out of the top 10 and being replaced by processing tomatoes. Wine grapes continue to rule as king in Sacramento County for the past eight years, and milk continues to hang on as number two. California is the third top-producing state of pears behind Washington and Oregon, and Sacramento County is the top pear-producing county in California. They remain as our third top crop. Then in fourth place, poultry, primarily turkeys, is our fourth-place commodity, and rounding out the top five is nursery stock. It hasn't been in the top five since 2010, due primarily to the slump in building and also new housing. So, you would think that the drought would also depress the nursery industry, but the prolonged drought actually encouraged many homeowners to tear out their water-thirsty landscapes and lawns and replace them with xeroscapes, using plants that are much more thrifty with their water requirements. That, together with the slowly recovering home-building industry, has helped the nursery industry return to the top five, and we're glad to see them there. As I mentioned earlier, 2016 saw the highest value in agricultural production in Sacramento history, with an increase of 7.9% over 2015. And as I said, it's somewhat surprising, as 2016 was also our fifth year of drought. And as expected, we did result, this did result in somewhat of a decrease in yield and in production in some of our commodities. So, why is our 2016 value higher? Well, the primary answer is grapes, wine grapes. Our top crops' value increased significantly in 2016. We saw increases in acreage, yield, and price, leading to a 44% increase, and this is huge. Because this is our top crop, these increases outweighed the losses that we saw in some of our other commodities. And also, in a drought, growers will often either plant less annual crops or leave annual crop fields fallow so that they can maintain their permanent crops, such as their vineyards and orchards. Finally, our milk value, our milk volume increased just a little bit, but the price also dropped slightly, and so that resulted in an overall decrease in one, of 1%. Also somewhat surprising, after I just said that they protect their permanent crops and let their annual crops kind of go to hell in a drought, we saw an increase of 55% in our veg crops, and processing tomatoes climbed into the top 10, pushing out rice. And I can't tell you why. I've looked and looked, I don't know why, but that's what happened this last year. So, although the acreage remained stable and the yield per acre dropped a little bit, the pear value increased slightly, due entirely to an increase in price. Now, unfortunately for walnuts, they had the same issues, where they were stable in acreage and they lost a little bit of yield, but unfortunately for them, the price, the bottom dropped out of the price for them. So, they dropped significantly, resulting in an overall loss of 35%. Our livestock overall saw a decrease of 23%, with cattle and calves down 25%. A lot of them were sold off earlier during the drought also, so our numbers were down. Aquaculture was down by 50% due primarily to a decrease in the price of caviar. I don't, I don't know if you remember, last year I told you the price of caviar was very mercurial, and this year proved that because it just sunk. Poultry increased slightly by 2%, and our apiaries increased by 53%, and that's due pretty much to an increase in sunflowers in our county that needed pollinating, so we had more bees this year. Okay, we'll take a quick look at our agricultural diversity. Our crop, our crop picture there continues to be dominated, dominated by fruit and nut crops, primarily wine grapes and pears. Field crops, livestock, and livestock products account for about a third of our production. And then you can see there in the red, vegetable crops make up about 8% of our production, and this past year in 2016, that was primarily tomatoes. The remainder is made up of nursery stock, aquaculture, seed crops, and apiary. So, we'll take just a brief look at some of the agricultural issues here in Sacramento County. Many of the challenges facing agriculture in Sacramento County are the same as those facing growers throughout the state. Immigrant workers, farmworkers in California, they're getting older, and they're not being replaced. A Pew Research study showed that the net flow across the U.S.-Mexico border reversed in 2005, and that trend accelerated through 2014. And the native-born Americans aren't really interested in this job, even at the wages that have soared to higher-than-average prices. Agricultural technology is trying to address the problem with more mechanization of both the growing and the harvesting of crops. But this often requires changes in the patterns of growing and also in the varieties of crops, so it doesn't happen really quickly. The California Water Fix, okay, this has been on my list and continues to be on my list. It seems to be on the downward spiral right now with the decision recently by the largest irrigation district in the state to not participate in the project to put the two tunnels under the delta. But according to the Chico Enterprise Record, the financing of the project has been so fluid that this may not be a fatal blow, so we will continue our vigilance on this topic. Also, what you're pretty much always going to see on this list, continued pressure on agricultural lands from development. As the economy recovers and building resumes, these pressures will continue to increase, so I'm sure you're going to continue to see this on our list. Ground and surface water regulations, along with the regulation of agricultural nutrients, it's meant to protect our precious water supply, but if they're not constructed using common sense, they will cripple our agricultural commodity that is already struggling under their heavy regulatory burden. And that's coming from me, and I'm a regulator. So, take that where it comes from. The issue of WOTUS, which is Waters of the U.S., began in 1972 with the passage of the Clean Water Act, and it continues today. Most recently, President Trump issued an executive order revising or rescinding the 2015 rule. But until they get a new rule promulgated, growers are stuck with trying to interpret a federal court decision to know whether a federal permit is required on their land. So, the saga of WOTUS continues. As you can see, being a farmer doesn't just mean sticking a seed in the ground and putting water on it. There's a lot more to it than that. Our department continues to take our charge of protecting California agriculture very seriously. We use some of the most effective resources that continue to keep out exotic invasive pests that could devastate our agricultural industry. Due to the huge success of our detection dog team in intercepting invasive pests at the U.S. Postal Center there in West Sacramento, we were awarded additional funding in the farm bill that allowed us to add a second detection dog team to our toolbox. We now have both Jennifer and Dozer there on the left, and Mariah and Cairo on the right, working to keep out destructive pests. In 2016, they sniffed out 126 shipments that contained invasive harmful pests. And not to be outdone, are actually, our human inspectors are still doing a good job, and they continue to work diligently inspecting our high-risk pathways. These numbers indicate the number of shipments and the number of interceptions of invasive pests in those shipments. As we have witnessed from our Japanese beetle infestations, just the establishment of a small population of one of these pests that we intercepted could result in eradication costs in the millions, as well as the inconvenience and stress on our residents to eradicate these pests, and quarantines that could negatively impact our businesses. And that's only the eradication project. We're not even talking about if they were to become established, the millions that it would cost, and the additional toxic pesticides that would be used in our environment to try to control these pests if they actually were to get established. So, this is a very, we take this very seriously, very important part of our job, our duties.
Julie, before you leave that, so the numbers on one side is the pests that's detected, and then the other?
No, the first one is the number of shipments that they looked at, like in air freight, they looked at 199 shipments, and 45 of them, they detected pests, invasive pests.
Okay. And if I could just ask you too, then, on the, in 2016, where they sniffed out, you know, in 126 different instances, shipments that contain invasive pests, where were those coming from other states, that coming from out of the, out of the country, or where?
Both.
Both?
Both. Florida is a huge, we get a lot from Florida, but we also get a lot from Guam and Puerto Rico, a lot of other countries. And the ones where, the ones that are actually most likely to carry pests are the non-commercial shipments. So, it's a, you know, part of the family has moved here, and they're missing the foods that mama used to make, and so, and they can't find some of the things here to continue to make those foods, and so, from home, they'll send them the produce. And unfortunately, along with it, they also send the pests that are native to that area and not here. So, yeah, both other states and other countries.
Patrick.
Just a quick question. So, looking at those numbers, it looks like the air freight inspections yield a whole lot more. I mean, it's 25%. So, how's the decision made, and then you have 3,925,18 found, which is miniscule in comparison. So, how's the decision made to monitor the trucks and parcels rather than more air freight?
Well, we, we monitor as much air freight, so we pretty much are maxed out there, looking at what's coming in. So, every month, we go and collect the tags, and they come under, a lot of them come under blue tags so that we can inspect them once they're delivered. Our inspectors will go out to the delivery site and look at them. So, we try to use our money where we can get the most bang for the buck. So, actually, the dogs are the best. I mean, to be perfectly honest.
The most bang for the buck is my question, because air freight looks like it's a bigger bang for your buck, so.
And it's already pretty much covered. We've got it well-covered. So, that just has to do with the numbers of shipments that are coming through. That's why they're so much bigger under parcels. That's like what's coming through FedEx. So, that number is huge.
Okay. So, do you do FedEx and UPS?
Yes.
Because you said postal service facility, but you also go to, because the others?
Yes. Because the others are in our county, and our inspectors do those. Actually, the postal facility is in West Sacramento in Yolo County, and the dogs are a, they're a regional resource. So, the majority, I will say, the majority of those packages that they're looking at in West Sacramento are actually coming to Sacramento. So, they're still protecting us. But they also go other places, they go to other counties and work. So, it is a federally-funded program, so they are a regional resource.
But there is some local funding, because a few years ago, we had, some of the severe budget cuts, we had, we put some general fund dollars in to save the one position at the time, now we have the two, obviously, so.
So, and that's been, that's just a, that's a wonderful program. It is a win-win, it's a great PR, plus it is just so effective. Dogs are just, our noses just don't work like that. In 2016, we exported over 160 million pounds of agricultural commodities to 67 different countries. And our largest exporter here in Sacramento County is Blue Diamond. And although all those almonds aren't grown here, they're processed, stored, and exported from here. So, we aid in the process by going to Blue Diamond and inspecting both the commodity and also watching and inspecting the treatment of those commodities so that they can enter into these other countries and be exported. And we issue the phytosanitary certificates that tell the agricultural officials in those countries that they meet all the import requirements, all of their quarantine requirements. And although my report is entitled "The State of Agriculture in Sacramento County," I would be remiss if I did not mention the other important consumer protection responsibilities of our department. This slide illustrates some of the various weights and measures inspections that we perform to ensure that Sacramento consumers get what they're paying for. So, we test gas pumps for meter accuracy and signage requirements, as well as responding to complaints. And we check scales ranging in size from tiny jeweler scales to the large vehicle scales and everything in between. So, if money changes hands over that scale, we inspect it. Measuring devices such as electric, gas, or water meters, and then finally, the price verification inspections, where we check the scanners to see that they are charging the advertised shelf price. So, in 2016, we had an almost 94% compliance rate, which is, that's really good. We're well within the state norm. And this concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. You're going to have to excuse my voice in fighting a throat issue here. Is there a reason, Julie, why the report doesn't include any information about Williamson Act?
About what?
About Williamson Act contracts? How much has come out in the last year? How much has been put in the last year?
Actually, it's, that's not a, you know, the, the report that you're getting, the crop report, is required by law, it's mandated by law.
Right.
And it's not one of the things that's required, but we would be happy to include that in, in future reports.
I think it'd be helpful, because there is some information in there about land use and conversion, so to me, it seems like it's appropriate that we have some information about where we are in terms of Williamson Act contracting, and do it year to year.
Okay. That'd be great. Actually, historically, Agricultural Commissioners' Office has, have not been that involved in land use issues, but over time, more and more, as, as you saw on the slide, we're getting more and more pressures on ag land, and the Agricultural Commissioners' Offices are becoming more and more involved in land use issues. So, it's becoming a much more important topic within our department, so we'd be happy to include that.
Yeah, and I would just concur, and I think it might be good, as part of the report to, you know, certainly a scaled-sized map of the county, but to show, I mean, we have acres that are identified certainly as, you know, lands of statewide importance, we have prime agricultural lands, you have those that are unique to the county and range land, and so, I think, you know, you can portray that certainly in a graph chart, but there might be a way to, again, you did a very nice job on the report itself, but I, I would concur to, that's probably a good, even though it may not be under, totally under your responsibility, working with the planning department.
We can do that.
Clear.
We can do that.
All right, Supervisor Kennedy.
Yeah, and just to clarify, you know, I'd be, beyond Williamson Act, but also, you know, I mean, what's the net loss of agricultural land over the years? I think that would be really important as we make land use decisions up here, to have that, whether that's in your purview or we find somewhere else, like, I think that's important information. And I just wanted to say, you know, this is one of my favorite reports every year.
And I just wanted to say, you know, this is one of my favorite reports every year.
Thank you.
And of the three years that I've been here, this is by far the best. This is really.
We're working on it. It was a big step up this year, so.
It's great.
So thank you very much.
Julie, just one other thing, and maybe you could just touch on it in 30 seconds or so, but in the report, you talk about the certified producers of farmers markets, where we see an emerging, I think, core of folks, a number of folks, you know, that have moved to this community, who are starting on small plots of land, growing some ethnic varieties of vegetables and so forth. And so you might be just touched for a moment, because we work closely, and I know the ride along idea a few years ago, that some of, not just the strawberry farmers, but now with some of your winter vegetables, as well as some of your leafy greens and so forth. And so maybe just real quickly, touch on that.
Well, we do, actually, this is the first year, I'm not exactly sure why, but they didn't include the list of our farmers markets. We normally include it in our crop report. And we do have a list available on our website, and we passed them out at the Farm to Fork Festival. The farmers markets continue to be not only very popular with the public, but they continue to offer an outlet for some of the more unusual or exotic. As we were saying, people can't find some of the things that, if they come from other countries, they can't find some of the vegetables that they need to create, some of the dishes that they enjoy. Well, actually, some of the farmers markets are a good place to get those. You can't find them in the normal grocery store quite often. But the farmers markets is actually a pretty good source for some of those materials, and certainly a much better source than having mom or dad back home send them to you. We would appreciate you going to the farmers market rather than sending them through the mail.
Okay. One other quick question then. So what about our agricultural advisor committee? Because I know that that was, it has been on the back burner for a long time as part of our general plan.
It's not on the back burner anymore. And you should be getting, I don't know if it's on your agenda yet, but it is, within the next couple of meetings, you'll have it on your agenda. So we have a, we have a full slate, and we're ready to go.
Okay. Very good. Thanks for that. Okay. If there's no other questions, I do have one speaker then. Thank you, Julie, and thanks to all of your staff for their good work, but certainly for in production of the report. Mr. Bird, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, Julie. And thank you for the goodies. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. I'll have you know, you just took the starch out of my presentation with those numbers.
All right. You can repeat it.
Mr. Chair, Board of Supervisors, some of you I've met, some I haven't. My name is Bill Bird. I am Executive Director of the Sacramento County Farm Bureau. I'm a bit surprised by these numbers. I was expecting these numbers to be down, because we have been going through a drought, and our growers do face a number of challenges. The fact that the price for wine grapes has gone up has obviously helped the bottom line when it comes to agriculture. But one thing that I did find troubling in my notes is that while we do have an overall increase in overall production and prices, I find troubling that we have production down in some key areas. Now, this could be due, that we've gone through five years of drought, and it'll be very interesting to see what the 2017 numbers look like next year. But I just wanted to continue to stress that it's not just drought that is affecting our growers in Sacramento County. Our farmers are forced to pay the highest labor costs in this country. The high minimum wage coupled with very expensive workers' compensation insurance, liability insurance, healthcare benefits, costs our growers millions of dollars. And these are things that growers in other states don't have to pay. Now, I understand that none of this came from the county. A lot of it is coming from the state level. In fact, the county seems to operate with a do no harm to agriculture philosophy, which our growers appreciate very much. At the same time, counties can also be effective voices for change. After two years, or, excuse me, 20 years of working in the state legislature, I can't begin to tell you how many bills that I worked with that sprang from resolutions that were introduced on the county level. So there are things that you can do and be very effective to help our growers in Sacramento County and across the rest of the state of California, simply by taking action to pass a resolution and hoping that that resolution, or working to get that resolution introduced in the state legislature. Thank you again.
Good. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate the work, the Farm Bureau, and certainly your members, production of crops and food and fiber in our community. So thank you so much. Okay. Had no one else signed to speak on this? Again, we thank our Agricultural Commissioner, their staff, and certainly our farmers and ranchers in this county for their production of things that grace our tables each and every day. So this is the information item. This is up on the website, Julie, as well?
It will be this afternoon.
Okay. It'll be up this afternoon, and then?
I have to, actually, you got it before the secretary. You got it.
Okay. Well, good. All right. Thanks a lot. Okay. With that, then, we'll move to item 48.
Okay. For item 48, Supervisor, we will need to take an oath if we have people signed up to speak. This is the Rio Linda Rite Aid and Starbucks, a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review to allow for the development of 2.08 acres for properties located on the intersection of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda community. The environmental document is a negative declaration.
Okay. Let me ask, I don't have anybody signed up to speak, and so if somebody intends to speak on this, you'll need to be sworn. So if you want to stand, if there's anybody that intends to speak, and if not, we'll proceed.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Leanne? Somebody gonna speak on this?
We do have an applicant group here.
Okay. So you understand, in any event, you could call upon, so just, you know.
Please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses. I do. Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give this board is the truth? So help you God, if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And when you come to the podium, please state your name for the record and the statement that I have been sworn.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Leanne?
All right. Good morning, members of the board. Before I get started, I did want to point out, we have five planning items in a row here, four of which are part of a larger general plan round, where you're going to be adopting a single resolution to change the general plan for four of those. So we do have to be careful about how we take our motions and our actions, and Krista and I have prepared to walk you through that here this morning. So on a couple cases, we're going to have you hold off on the resolution, and then you'll adopt that resolution at the end. You will be taking action on the sequo documents or exemptions, as the case may be, as you go along, and taking other tentative action as you go along on each item. So I just wanted to mention that before we get started. So the first of the items is a proposed Rite Aid and Starbucks in Rio Linda. The location here is at the northeast corner of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda community. The proposal is to build a Rite Aid and a Starbucks on a little over two acres. It does include a general plan amendment that you would be acting upon today. And then you would be deferring, taking tentative action and deferring the actions on the community plan amendment rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review. But we will go through all of those today. So the project site is here, shown on an aerial, again, at the northeast corner. It's currently, has a, well, let's see. In addition to the area shown in the red strikeout, I did want to note that the applicants have also purchased the single-family residential home that fronts on Lilac Lane and is located right here. So it's not part of the proposal, but they do now own that single-family home, because that was part of discussions about whether there would be impacts to that single-family residence there. Here are the entitlements. The use permit is to allow amplified noise associated with the Starbucks drive-through speaker within 300 feet of the residential zone. Special development permit relates to deviations from setback standards, and then there's design review. This slide is fairly detailed, but it does go through what each of the special development permit items are. On the left are the ones related to Rite Aid, reducing a side street yard on Lilac Lane. The trash enclosures will be up against that residential property that they now own and control. The loading dock will also be up against that residential property that they now own. There is a reduced driveline distance from the public street on Lilac Lane. The parking is slightly below minimum, but we do have some alternate horse parking that I'm going to talk about in a little bit. There is, they're eliminating the seven-foot-wide landscape screen planter adjacent to that residential parcel behind the trash closure that they now own. And we are asking for a taller sound wall in order to deal with those potential impacts. The Starbucks also has a reduced setback from single-family, a couple of sites of which they do not own, but we have not heard any comments on that. They have a shared trash enclosure area, a reduced distance from the drive-up window to the residential zoning, reduce minimum landscape planter, and also the eight-foot sound wall. So here's the site plan. And again, this is the proposed Rite Aid here. This is the Starbucks. The Starbucks drive-through, you'll place your order here, and then you'll go through the drive-through to do your pickup. This is the property that they've now acquired. This is the loading dock area. This is the trash area. The area where you get your prescriptions when you drive through, when you're sick and you don't want to go in the store and share all your germs with everyone, is right here. You'll come in off of Lilac Lane and go into the drive-through right here. One of the very unique features that the community wanted, that the applicants have been very much willing to accommodate, is at this corner right here, they're going to install a horse hitching post. Rio Linda still does have, very close by, a number of horse properties. The corner adjacent to the parking lot will be fenced off with split rail, and the hitching post will be behind the split rail fence. So that's one very unique feature that the media has picked up on and is very unique to the site. But it is a unique community, so that's appropriate. The other thing we're very appreciative of is the applicants have been willing to set aside an area right here, out at the corner of Rio Linda and Elkhorn, for the potential future installation of a community interest sign that would have to be designed and funded by the county. So we don't have that designed done, but they have been willing to reserve that location and we're extremely appreciative of that. That's something that was very important to the community. So I wanted to point out where that was on the site plan. This is some site detail having to do with the horse hitching area at that northwest corner. Basically, the guard rail to prevent the horses from going into the parking area and drive area would be here, and the hitching post would be here. And then this is the wall design, the sound wall design. It does have a beveled cap and has posts. And so it has been reviewed for its design qualities. This is the landscape plan. These are the elevations. Those were the elevations for the Rite Aid, and these are the elevations for the Starbucks. Some of the key points are, this is a major intersection within the community. It's across a street from another large grocery store complex. The site currently includes a church, three single-family homes, and three vacant parcels. The project has been supported by the community, and the design does incorporate items requested by the CPAC, including the larger wall, the location for the, a potential future county-installed sign, and a horse hitching area. The CPAC did recommend approval back in October of 2016. Four members of the public did come with some questions. They weren't necessarily opposition. And they had questions about how access would happen on Lilac Lane, how the whole road improvements were going to happen with the, there is a subdivision that's been approved on the north side of Lilac, so they had questions about how that was all going to come together, support for the sign and the horse hitching post. So the CPAC recommended approval. We've incorporated all of their recommendations into this project, other than the last item. The landscaping that is conditioned to be installed meets county standards, but we haven't necessarily, we have not asked them to install larger upfront landscaping. In a lot of cases, we find that installing the trees at the specified size works well, because then the tree grows into its site and actually can do better over time.
Supervisor Serna? Just give me, Leanne.
Yes.
I wasn't sure how much more you had to go, but when it comes to the horse hitching post, will there be any signage indicating or demanding that the horse owners are responsible for cleaning up after their horse?
I don't think we have that as a condition, but we could certainly speak to the applicant about that. It is a DG area rather than a lawn area. Obviously, presumably, the horses would, you know.
Do what horses do.
Do what horses do, and mess up lawn, you know, might end up being all gouged. So they installed DG. I'm not sure that I know what the cleanup.
Might be worth thinking about.
Yeah. Okay. Again, we will be coming back with conditions, so that's something we could easily incorporate into the final conditions if appropriate, since we're not acting on that component today. The Planning Commission also heard this, and one of the discussions was the fact that the applicant has now purchased 416 Lilac Lane, because there were some questions about how that would work with the trash up against that. They amended the Condition 8, and this is in your board report, with regard to limiting the garbage collection hours. They amended Condition 10, allowing the Starbucks to close their drive-through at 10:00 PM, a little bit later than the 8:00 PM version of the condition. They added Condition 62 regarding a detailed lighting plan, and then, actually, not on the slide, but we have Condition 63 that has to do with the future community interest sign. So you'll see those, those will be in your final materials that we would adopt at the next meeting. So the recommendation today is that you determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, adopt the negative declaration, adopt the MMRP. We'll have you hold off till the end of these sequential items to adopt the general plan amendment, and actually, we'd have you take tentative action on the community plan amendment rezone use permit, special development permit, and design review, and you can actually go ahead and take that tentative action at the end of this item and not wait on that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Leanne. Let me ask, board members, any questions? And then we'll take the comments from the applicant, so.
I don't have any questions, but when the time comes, I'm prepared to move.
Okay.
Approval of the community plan amendment.
All righty. Okay. Let's go to our applicant then. If there's no questions for Leanne, the applicant wish to make any comments? Presentation?
Yes. Good morning, and thank you for your time. My name is Randall Smith. Kirk is my middle name. I live at 1916 Park Oak Drive in Roseville, longtime resident of Sacramento County as well. I'm, she, Leanne Moffett, did a great job of presenting the project. She covered a whole lot of the items that I would want to cover, but as I think that she's mentioned today and also in the package, there has not been any community opposition to this project. We had several community council meetings, and people showed up to hear some details. But after each of our meetings, at the community council and the planning commission, we got unanimous approvals from people. And I think that's, I'm going to keep it brief, but I think it's really for two reasons. First off is the tenants. There literally is not any drugstore of any type, not even a local pharmacist, within three miles. There's one about four miles to the east on Watt, one about three miles to the south at Norwood, and one about three and a half miles to the southwest in Natomas. But not even a local pharmacy is closer than that. And more surprising, there also isn't a Starbucks or a similar coffee shop within that distance. And that's amazing. So the community really wants these services, so that's number one. Number two is that this intersection is severely underimproved, and there's been several applicants who have tried to come in and develop this property over the last 15 years. But because of the amount of improvements required on three street frontages, once they get through the full analysis of their project, they've determined that it just isn't feasible, so they've fallen aside. But together with the Rite Aid and the Starbucks, we've been able to make this pencil, but just barely. But it does work. We're ready to go, and we're hoping that we can build a very nice project here for you.
Okay. Thanks, Randall. Any questions, Mr. Smith? Okay. Very good. Thanks for being here this morning, for your comments. Any other member of your team wish to speak? Okay. All right. And would note that Mr. Smith had been sworn as well. Yeah. Okay. All right. So bring it back to you, Leanne. Supervisor Frost has prepared my question. Anything else you need to add? Bless you.
No, I just want to clarify the actions we would be asking you to take. Determine that the environmental analysis is adequate and complete, and adopt the negative declaration, adopt the MMRP, take tentative action on the community plan amendment and the remainder of the items, and defer all of those until October 31st. So that would be our requested actions right now.
Okay, that's motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Moving to the second, then, to take the actions outlined by the planning director. And if there's nothing further, I had no one signed to speak, and I wish to address this item before we act on it. All right, seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right, very good. Next item, related item.
Next item is Item 49. This is also the Rite Aid's...
Oh, thank you, thank you, Randall.
This is also the Rite Aid store. This is the ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a Type 21 liquor license to Rite Aid located at the corner of Rio Linda Boulevard and Elkhorn Boulevard in the Rio Linda, Alberta community.
May I ask Mr. Smith for this one, just in case? Anyway, okay. All right, Leanne.
All right, so I have a very brief PowerPoint on this. Won't belabor a lot of the slides. We've already looked at the location. We've already looked at the site plan in detail. So the key points here is they are looking for a Type 21 liquor license. The area is both high crime and over-concentrated, but there is a desire to have the liquor license so that the Rite Aid can be a full-service, typical Rite Aid kind of store. The store hours will be 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., but the sale of alcohol, as we do with most of these actions, will be cut off at 10:00 p.m. We have the no-single sales and the standard condition about the size of alcohol. And the CPAC did recommend approval on a five-to-zero vote, and the CPAC members were satisfied with the security and lighting conditions.
Okay, thank you, Leanne.
Yeah.
All right, this is a public hearing on the findings for public convenience for the off-sale of, actually, a full liquor license for this, so... Would ask if the applicant wants to make any comments about this, and then... Nope. All right, so we have no one coming forward. I have no one signed to speak. Is there any member of the public wish to address this? I'll clear the public hearing open on this. All right. Seeing no one coming forward, then, bring it back to the board. Leanne, you've got the recommended conditions. Supervisor Frost, did you want to... Leanne?
Yeah, so in this case, we would be asking you to make the finding, yeah.
Okay. All right, so it's moving second to make the finding to support the finding of public convenience with conditions as noted that will be forwarded to the ABC. All right, anything further, then, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, next item.
Item 50 is the general plan cleanup package, request for a general plan amendment.
So the next item is really... Corrects a large number of very small items in the general plan, typically typographic errors, new organizational names throughout the county, some unassigned or reassigned implementation measures, and some changes to figures due to the annexation of fulsome. I do have a PowerPoint that pretty much says just that, so...
Okay.
If there are no questions, we can probably forego that.
I summarize that. We have the package before us. Any member of the board want to ask any questions about this item? All right, seeing none. I have no one signed up.
Move it.
Okay.
So we would have you recognize the exemption, and you're going to hold off on the resolution.
Okay, that's the motion.
I agree to that.
Okay, that's the motion that's been seconded. I have no one signed to speak. Anyone wish to address this item? All right, seeing none, then, it's moving seconded. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, next item.
All right, the next item. As time has gone by, we discovered in the land use diagram four sites, which, when we were updating the plan, at one point in time, we had contemplated either putting urban development area or urban reserve. Ultimately, we withdrew those designations and went back to the underlying general plan designations that had existed before, but for four small spots, the materials that we took forward didn't withdraw either the UDA or the urban reserve, so we just wanted to clean that up and get that correct.
All right. If you could, quickly, why don't you just show the four sites, so that for those that are watching from a distance, they can see what we're talking about.
Definitely. So if we can bring up the PowerPoint, I can go through what those are, and we have done outreach to the four property owners. So here's the vicinity map of the four. One is in the general eastern area, where we inappropriately showed it for urban development area, and it should be natural preserve.
Okay.
The next one is Tykert-owned property that should be General Ag 80. It's a little tooth that goes down into the city of Rancho Cova, but is in the county. This one is south of Mather, should be extensive industrial, which is what it was before.
Okay.
And the final one is in Vineyard, which should be low-density residential. It's off of Elgro Florin and...
You know what's at Gerber, on McCoy?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good.
Move the item.
Okay, move. Moving second, then, to approve the item.
So again, you're recognizing the exemption and holding off on the resolution.
All right, that's the motion. No one here speak to this item? Item 51? All right, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And then item... Oops, sorry.
So Item 52 is the general plan safety element and safety element background update general plan amendments to the safety element and safety element background to revise outdated information related to flood hazards, seismic and geologic hazards, fire hazards, and emergency response. The environmental document is exempt.
So in this case, you may recall, back in 2016, we bought forward a package of amendments specifically related to flooding in order to meet some state law changes. At that point in time, when your board was reviewing those changes, you realized that a number of the safety element sections, particularly the background section, had not been updated in many years. Some probably had been written 25-odd years ago, and a few things had changed in the past years. So staff took a comprehensive look at the safety element and has provided you with a revised version, updating things to current standards.
If I recall, Leanne, on this one, there was...
Yes.
We had some discussion about the languages related to areas that could be impacted by flooding, and some of the language that was kind of cut and paced at the time.
Yes.
Did that...
Yes.
Could you just point that?
So we've updated the figures, we've updated the text. So if you look at Exhibit B of the resolution...
Okay.
We have a clean version, and Exhibit C is a strikeout version. And we've gone through and just worked with water resources staff quite thoroughly. We've taken a fair amount of time to do this, and we've really reworked all those older sections.
So Exhibit C is the version that's being proposed, is the strikeout?
Exhibit C is the clean version, and Exhibit D is the strikeout version, bold and strikeout, so you can see all the changes and...
Okay, all right. Thanks. Okay, we don't have anyone signed to speak.
Move the item.
I have a second, chair with seconded. It's been seconded, then, to, again, certification on the exempt status of the document and adopt the attached resolution.
So now you're... Yeah, now you're ready to adopt the resolution for all the items, so our request is to have you adopt the resolution for a general plan amendment subject to findings that are in each report.
First, we got to pull the vote up on this one.
I'm sorry, oh. Unanimous vote.
Very good, thanks. All right, so now you need an all-encompassing vote, is what you're saying?
No, I think you... Oh, is that what you just did?
Yeah, we just voted on 50.
Yes.
52 included all that?
That's what I understood. Didn't you read?
I thought you had to go back to another one.
Sorry, I thought you had recognized the exempt status, took a vote on that, and then now you need to adopt the resolution for a general plan amendment.
Right, okay. So that's the motion, okay. All right. Do we have a motion, then, to adopt the resolution?
Move.
Move. Okay, move them second, then. All right, anyone wish to speak to that? Action? Seeing none, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Move through a lot of paper very quickly, Ms. Moffett. Very good. Okay. Takes us through the morning agenda. We do have some off-agenda speakers, though, so I would call them in order they were turned in. I have David Warren. David, you have a letter, I think you want to present, or maybe give it to the clerk, and it's been distributed, Mr. Warren. Rules deal out to five minutes for non-agenda items, so, David. And then I have Martha Ash following, Mr. Warren. Good morning, David.
Two months ago, I brought to your attention an issue concerning emergency medical transportation in Sacramento County. When I was here, the chair indicated that perhaps within the four to six weeks, I would hear from the county concerning scheduling this item on the agenda. When that didn't happen, I wrote to Mr. Gill, asking about the status. You have a copy of that letter? I didn't receive a response. Ordinarily, patience would be worthwhile, but in this instance, it can't. On Saturday, I had to transport my wife in my car to UC Davis Medical Center because she had a heart attack because Metro Fire would not transport her to UC Davis. It was necessary that you go to UC Davis because of her medical history, which is unique, and but for the fact that her medical records and past test records were there, she would have died. It cannot be reasonable, after two months, that this matter cannot come before the board. I can't be the only person that has this problem. I have given my service to this country. I have served as an attorney representing those people who no one would want to defend, people who are accused of murder. And I have volunteered, and my wife has volunteered, provide Jewish services to CDCR inmates where no Jewish chaplain can be available. I'm not asking much. You may not agree with my proposal, but at least I deserve to have this matter scheduled. There are a lot of seniors such as myself who require unique and special medical attention, which requires complete medical records. Had my wife been in a metro ambulance in transit, she could have received her IV medication, which was immediately given to her on arrival at UC Davis. Even though I live two miles from Mercy Hospital, none of my wife's medical records, very special medical records, were available to that hospital, and would have taken more time for them to determine what action to take than the time from when I walked into the front door of UC Davis Medical Center to the time four minutes later when our IV began. Now, I recognize you have many issues. There's budget, there's people who want to develop, there are employment, and God bless the volunteers, but life-safety issues have got to be one of the most important things you have to address. Now, the Metro Fire Department has no reason and will gladly transport anyone from Citrus Heights to UC Davis. The only thing that prevents them from doing so is the committee that this county has established. Private ambulances will not transport from Citrus Heights to UC Davis because of the protocol which your committee has established and which could result in the suspension or termination of a paramedic's license. It is unconscionable that there cannot be an exception for individuals with extraordinary or very unusual medical conditions to be transported to a hospital that can treat them. Now, I don't mean to be threatening, but my life, my wife's life, is irreplaceable, and, excuse me, and I cannot understand why the five of you cannot get the county administrator to set this on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Ms. Gill, you have a copy of the letter, and I know there's...
I just received a copy, and I am embarrassed to say this is the first time I've seen this. We have referred this to DHHS. They've been looking at it. I'll follow up immediately what the status is. The request, as Mr. Warren has indicated from last time, was to see what policy changes we need to make and report back, and I'll follow up on this.
Okay. You think it's possible, then, assuming it's appropriate to have it agendized? Again, we have a committee that reviews, obviously, ambulance protocol in this county.
Absolutely. We will meet with Mr. Warren and come back to you as quickly as possible. I think, as he's indicated, there's some policies that I believe the recommendation is not to change, but I have asked to find out what was the rationale behind it. I've not heard that, but I will report back to the board on that.
Within what time period?
I would like to get it done by first meeting in October.
Okay.
So that's October 17th, right?
October 17th will be our... So we're going to take the next couple of weeks, and again, recognizing, obviously, there's, you know, fragile lives at stake here, and so we're going to do our best to get it back before us, October 17th will be our first meeting in October, so...
And we'll communicate...
But in the meantime, David, we'll have Mr. Gill in his office communicate with you, and then we'll work to get it on the agenda for some consideration, whatever that may be. I mean, we don't have... From the last time you were here, we don't have any report back yet, and obviously, people have been looking at it, but I understand the urgency, obviously, for both you and your wife, and maybe others that are in the same circumstance, so let us see if we can get this back to us pretty quickly.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, David. Okay. Then with that, we have Martha Ash. Martha? I'll just say, as Martha comes forward, I know that she spoke with a member of my staff and left communication that she may be sharing with us today. I've informed Mr. Gill about this, and I don't know we're in any position to... So if you'll identify yourself, Martha, and I'll yield to you five minutes as well, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for hearing me, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your good service. I believe, well, Mr. Natoli, you know I've been coming to you for seven years now with these same issues. Ms. Peters, you recommended to the board in 2012, July of 2012, when I stood right here and asked you and the Board of Supervisors at that time, which were a few other people, different people at that time, I asked you if you would please look into the vacancies that were dropping like flies off of the Lock Management Association Board and Lock Foundation Board in the Town of Lock, where I reside and where I have been sued by this, the public agency that includes, according to the bylaws, a chair seat for the Board of Sup... To represent the Sacramento County, as well as a board seat to represent state parks, and three, suspectly, in my opinion, discriminatorily seated chair seats for representatives of Chinese associations. How can that exist on a public board? That there's a specified race? The residential population of only about 40 or 50 people in Lock, in the Town of Lock, and then is Lock South, has approximately 75 people of Hispanic origin. The Town of Lock itself has approximately 85% population of Hispanic origin. Why is there not a board seat, or three board seats, or six board seats for people of Hispanic origin? Or what about any other origin? In other words, what I'm saying is, a public board should not have a specification for race. Okay. I am here today to pay you about $5,500 or so in assessments that I have recently been charged by these people who took, stole my property title of my $21,000 art gallery that I invested another $80,000 into repairs over the last five years with your county-approved building permits, including wheelchair access and a main street door to allow wheelchair access. Last week, these self-elected, since 2009, Board of Directors, who are all financially tied to one another, and this is not the first time you've heard me tell you this, took it upon themselves and got three or four of their friends to walk past my ice cream parlor with chainsaws, radial arm saws, sledgehammers, without any public hearing, without any approval of the 38 owners of the property now that was taken away from me and determined to be common ground, and the removed historic foundation that used to be a neighboring property but was within the parcel. I've got... I don't know if you can shine this on here.
It's up.
And anyway, okay, it shows right there in your special planning area document that that property that was taken away from me is commercial residential. That's why you folks, or the folks downstairs, issued me a business license for my art gallery. These self-elected, crony-appointed Board of Directors, who are my next-door neighbors and who act like a bully gang against me and other people, but especially me, in the town, fought my building, fought my assessments for the first four months that I tried to pay them my commercial rate... pay them, my commercial rate assessments, when I owned the building back in 2011. And recently, now that they've got the title, they took me to small claims court and said that I owe them assessments and that, even though they protested my assessment payments initially, telling me I was not the rightful owner of that property. Small claims court judge determined that, with no explanation, that yes, I have to pay the assessments. So, since I don't believe that any of those so-called board members who are left, seven of a 13-member board, eight of them have jumped ship, the seven who are left are all the next-door neighbors of mine who claim to be legally elected even though they were not, and they held a sham election in March of 2017 for only two of the six property owner seat board elections. And they held up the private ballots, one at a time, for the news camera, it's on YouTube, and counted the ballots themselves. They did not have a third party.
Martha, I need you to conclude.
I'm sorry.
Because I know you were here for a particular purpose today.
Yes. My purposes, and did you all receive my letter I gave to the clerk yesterday?
I sent it to the county executive.
This is my reasons in protest, why I'm protesting these payments, but I wish to give them to you because I don't feel there's one legal member left. And you folks are the parent of this organization.
Yeah. And I don't know that we can receive those. I know that we talked about this last year when the issue came up. So, the county council's here.
I've had them made out to the Lock Management Association, but in protest with the accompanying letter.
Hold on, she has the letter, so, yeah.
Robin just provided me a copy of a letter that June Powell's Mays wrote to Martha Esch, May 17th of 2017, returning the assessment check because the county is not authorized to accept the check pursuant to the Lock Management Association bylaws and CCNRs. Such assessments must be paid to the Lock Management Association and not the county.
Okay.
I wrote that check out in May to the Board of Supervisors. This check is made out to Lock Management Association, but I believe there is no Lock Management Association since they are not legally elected.
Let me offer this, because again, certainly, in going back a number of years, but I've talked with the county executive, and I've indicated you in the past, and I've spoken with the county council's office as well, as it relates to membership and vacancies and certainly some of the questions that you've raised, but others may see it differently, but I think there's an important role the county had in obviously establishing this under the, at the time when we actually married the land back up with the buildings and took a number of other actions, you know, a number of years ago. And so, I've asked the county executive, and I don't know if you want to weigh in, I shared this with you about bringing, I think, a fuller discussion, not necessarily specific to all of Martha's issues, because they're, you know, some of these are, you know, specific between landowners and obviously, the association as its current construct is, but to actually have this board have, via county council and county executive's office, some recommendations as to, you know, how we might address the vacancies, because we do have some appointment authority as it relates to those, but certainly, there are other things that are laid out in the charter that allow them to, you know, function once they were created, and so, I don't know if you've had a chance to.
So, since we had the last discussion on Monday, I've not had a chance to sit down with county council, go over all the options, but what I am thinking about with input from county council will be bring this item on the agenda, to have the board have a discussion on the appointments and other outstanding issues that have existed. We're looking at sometime, most likely in November, to bring that back to you.
Okay. All right. So, that would be, I noticed out of our agenda, Martha, but today, I don't believe, and county council, certainly Krista weighing in, that, understanding certainly your concerns and your wish to, you know, pay the assessments under protest, but for us to receive those, I don't believe that's appropriate unless someone else gives me that guidance, and so... But we do intend, in the next few weeks, to, working with county council and county executive, to actually have an item. We'll notify the appropriate parties, and I'm sure we'll have a number of folks, yourself included, here to talk about some of the issues that you've raised over a number of years now.
May I have 30 more seconds of your time?
Okay, 30 more seconds, then we're going to do it.
Thank you. I just want you to see that last week, the Lock Management Association's lawyers sent me a billing for post-judgment charges of 25 pages of redacted names of emails that they have to read, most likely from my very next-door neighbors, who claim to be the secretary and chairman of this board, and their treasurer, who is actually their tenant. $83,000 more they want from me, just in the last eight months, post-judgment charges, at the rates of $350 an hour and $240 an hour for lawyers to talk to each other about reading my next-door neighbor's emails. I'm sorry, you guys need to intervene, and they've leased my properties, they're going to take everything I own.
All right. You can leave that information with us, and again, we will bring this back to the Board. So, if you want to leave copies of those documents or certainly even my office later today, Martha, we'll get them to the right folks, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Then that's all the off-agenda speakers for this morning session. We'll be back in session then at, we have a closed session, then we'll be back in public session at 2:00, so.
We're going to have a closed session right now?
Yes, we'll go to a closed session right now. Good afternoon. Want to welcome all of you who joined us for the afternoon session of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, September 26, 2017 meeting, and I know we have some folks that are signed to speak and others that may want to address the Board on items that are on the agenda. We also have some off-agenda speakers. We'll get to those at the end of the session, so appreciate your patience. And with that, then, let's go ahead and call the roll to establish a quorum, and we'll get into the heart of the afternoon session.
Okay. Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. And so, just with note, again, I have some off-agenda speakers, but if you wish to address an item that's on the published agenda, I would encourage you to fill out a speaker form as you feel the need, and then get that to our clerk, and we'll go ahead and call upon you when we get to those items. So, we're going to have some presentations, I know, on a couple of items, so.
Okay. For your first item, number 53, this is the McClellan Park Special Planning Area Amendment and Development Agreement Amendment, a zoning ordinance amendment to the McClellan Park Special Planning Area to change ownership. I do need a motion to continue this item to October 17th.
So, move.
Okay. So, move. Move and seconded. Any reason for the continuance?
I don't have the reason at this moment.
Okay. Sorry, we can vote on it, but I'm just curious. It wasn't noted ahead of time.
Yeah, our apologies. We did have some procedural errors with one of the attachments that we need to correct and bring back.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Leah. Okay. Thank you. Be back on the 17th of October. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right.
Okay. Item 54 is the Transient Occupancy Tax Grant Program Review Panel Recommendations.
Okay. Now, as Troy's coming forward, certainly wants to thank our board subcommittee, Supervisors Peters and Kennedy, for their work. I know this has been quite a process over the past several months, but appreciate your leadership and work, and I know Mr. Givens is going to give the report, but we'll all get a chance to weigh in here, but I want to thank you, and thank you, Patrick, too, for your, for your work. So, okay, Mr. Givens.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Troy Givens with the Department of Economic Development. We're going to be doing a brief presentation today that will talk about the background of TOT, the TOT Outreach and Application Process that we went through, and then ultimately, the grant panel's recommendation to your board for ultimate consideration. There'll be several dates and so forth in this presentation, so you'll have to bear with me a little bit as we move forward. So, by way of background, in recent years, a portion of the transit occupancy tax revenue has been used to fund a set of civic organizations like the Convention and Visitor Bureau and others, and also provides district funds that board members can allocate for local needs as well. At the beginning of 2017, the Board expressed some interest in allocating a portion of TOT revenue through a application process or a competitive grant process. So, in February, we held a workshop. The Board asked us to come back with some more specificity on February 28th. At that point, your Board decided to set aside $1 million through the budget process for allocation at a later date, which is what brings us to where we are today. At that point, we had proposed grant criteria. We talked about proposals can be used for any public use. Grantees must be a nonprofit organization or a local government. Grant cycle funding may be one or two years. The minimum contract amount would be $20,000 as a recommendation, and projects with matching funds would receive priority consideration. In March, we conducted outreach and advertisement through the Impact Foundry, which is formerly the nonprofit resource center, countywide website posting, social media, local chambers, property-based improvement districts, and direct mail to over 300 nonprofits within the region. At that point in time, we received 149 applications, totals requesting about $18.5 million. So, between April, in the latter part of April, staff verified the proposals met all the minimum criteria. We met, went through a process with county council where they reviewed all of these applications as well to determine that they were eligible to receive county funds. And on May 25th, your Board asked us to come back in June to develop some more specific criteria and come up with a ranking system on how we would move forward and advance this process. In June, the Board approved to move forward with a scoring and ranking system. We also created a review panel. That's where your Board designated Supervisor Peters and Supervisor Kennedy to head up a grant review panel, along with the chiefs of staff from District 1, 4, and 5. These were ultimately to make recommendations on recipients to your larger board. They also brought aboard Ms. Shelley Willis, who's in the audience today. She's a grant consultant with considerable experience in working with applications like this. She provided invaluable input and resource to the process, and I can talk a little bit more about how she refined the process as we go forward as well. So, based on the high number of applications that we received and the submitted organizations with very diverse interests and activities, Shelley recommended that the applications be divided into subject panel areas and first be reviewed and ranked through a series of subject matter experts. So, we went through that process. Ultimately, there were nine categories. The applicants were asked to place themselves within one of these categories. They were ultimately grouped to five separate categories, which are arts and culture, where we received 26 applications, community development, where we received 28 applications, health and human services were combined, where we had a combined 25 applications, economic development and workforce development, where we had 25 applications, and then parks, youth development, and animal care, where we had 45 applications. In June and July, the subject matter experts were convened. They were given these applications to review. Ultimately, we asked for additional information, which required us, the applicants, to submit additional budget summary information, information on staffing and structure of their organization and work samples. So, at that point, when the subject area matter experts came together, they were a group that were diverse from the Sacramento Community Region Foundation, who again, has significant experience in this area, community arts experts, private sector volunteers, as well as county staff. In August, the latter part of August, we convened five subject area panels. They went through an extensive process to review and rank these applications. At that point, that information was forwarded to a grant review panel, and it should be noted at this point that the grant review panel was not involved in the process of ranking or reviewing applications up to that point. Ms. Willis and county staff had been overseeing that process, so there was a separate process through the expert panel, and then that information was forwarded to the panel at large. So, they received applicant rankings, a summary of subject matter experts' panel notes for each application, and then two proposed funding options. Option one was fund the highest-ranking applications out of the 149 that were submitted, and then the second option was to fund organizations based on the highest rank within those five categories that we had discussed earlier. The TOT Grant Review Panel unanimously agreed to recommend to the Board Option 2 with some adjustments, and I'll walk you through those adjustments. So, they wanted to take the $1 million and separate out $750,000 to allocate within those five categories, so there were representation from all of the different types of categories that were applied for through the 149 applications. They also made a determination that it would be best, given the size and the amount of need, to come up with up to 50% of the total request for each of those applications in order to fund as many potential projects as possible. They also recommended that each board member receive $50,000 to allocate at the board member's discretion to any one of the 149 applications that were received. So, that splits it into a pot of three-quarters and one-quarter through that process. They also determined that it would be best, because we're not sure about the future of this TOT pilot program, to compress the two-year cycle and fund those applications upfront in this year. There should be one note here as well, that there was an organization in the arts and culture category that was within the potential fundable range, but they could not deliver the project within the two-year timeframe that the Board had discussed in the intent of the grant program, so they were eliminated from consideration at that panel process. So, before we look at the chart here that's on the screen, I'd also like to note that several board members also took it upon themselves to allocate additional funds that they had within their district monies to some of the applicants within this process. District 5 called out the City of Galt Soilborne Farms, Lapcats, Elk Grove Fine Arts Center, Reading Partners, and the Veterans Golf Program to all receive funding from district monies from District 5. Supervisor Kennedy also funded one of the, excuse me, one of the additional applicants as well, and Supervisor Prost also provided funding to the Los Rios Foundation through a separate funding outside of this process. So, we've gone through the process. We have notified all of the applicants of the recommendation, the time and place of the hearing dates as of today. If your Board takes action on this item today, we'll be executing contracts and sending those out as well. So, if you have any questions as it relates to this process, Shelley and I are available. I'd also be remiss if I didn't mention that we have a number of people that work on this. Crystal Bethke was integral to this process and did a fantastic job, so I'd like to call her out and thank her as well for assistance in this process. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Troy. Okay, we have some questions. Come inside, board members. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, while we're calling people out, I want to step up.
It'd be a different expression next time.
And do the same thing, because this was an entirely complicated, perhaps complicated at our own making, process, but, you know, staff, you know, Crystal, Troy, yourself, and Shelley was, you know, invaluable in helping us weed through these. But I also want to thank Supervisor Peters, who really took more of a lead than I did, and I think that the process was about as clean as you're going to see for 150 organizations fighting for a really limited pot of money. And I think that the organizations that were landed upon are tried and true Sacramento area organizations, most of them, some younger, some a little older, and really showed the diversity geographically that I think some of us were concerned with. And while no process is perfect, I think this was as close as it could be with the complexities, so thank you very much for your work.
Mr. Patrick.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Patrick. I echo your comments. When we got together after being, after volunteering to do this, we looked at each other and said, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to do this and make sure that it's fair and be transparent?" So, we went through the division. So we went through the divisions that Troy described, and then we thought, you know, it's best to get expert panelists in here. And I do want to thank them. I don't know if any of them are here in the audience today, but we had, I don't know, probably 12, 15 panelists in the different subject areas that read through every application and scored it. And I think they came up with a good set of recommendations. And then we met with the three chiefs of staff that don't represent Patrick's or my district and worked through the results and agreed with them. And it was, you know, it was emotional experience in addition. There are so many good groups that had requirements, and as Patrick said, it's a limited amount of money, although a lot of money for this county, and we just really wanted it to be as fair as possible. And I really want to give a big shout out to Shelley Willis, who just, who dived in with, we had no process in place.
Right.
And thank goodness, she's had experience in, maybe with no process, but you know, she drew upon her experience at how to set this up. And I think if we do decide to do it again next year, it will be a little more understandable process. And then lastly, thank you to the nonprofits for their patience in allowing us to work through and set up this process and the interviews and the review of all the applications. So thank you, Shelley, and Crystal, who was Miss Efficiency in this, and on the emails and the spreadsheets, and, "Boy, you could do it this way here, you could do it this way." She kept pushing buttons and our eyes rolled back on our heads. So that was quite entertaining, and I think we came up with a good set of recommendations. In addition, the $50,000 per district was set aside in case there were certain projects that supervisors were aware of, that they really wanted to make sure got noticed. So very, very proud of the work that was done by all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just add that certainly when you get 150 rounded off number of applications and you can fund maybe 35 or 40 of those total with, you know, with the contributions from supervisors and the recommendations of the panels and certainly of the grants review committee, it still leaves obviously a lot of unmet need. And I know there's, you know, some, as much as there are some folks that are delighted, there's some folks that are disappointed. But I would just say too, that this is the first year in more than a decade where we've been able to actually embark on this. And it was, you know, it's taken us a while certainly to see the opportunity to do this. And again, the process is one that, the refinement that occurred this time around, I think would, you know, serve this board well as we go into the next budget year. And I guess as soon as January, February, it'll be back before us to get some direction from this board, whether we want to, you know, do this, you know, again, next year. Obviously, budget dollars available, but certainly, you know, desirability of this board to want to see the process go forward again. But I guess the positive I took out of all of this is that they're certainly identified a whole host of community projects, certainly needs, but also I think the activities that go on, a lot of them kind of under the radar of what sort of the county does, but very important to communities, to people of all ages. And again, I think this is a good start, albeit it may be a one-fifth of all the folks that applied. Nonetheless, I think the opportunity then is some of these have received funding that hopefully would allow for others then to emerge in a process that we'd undertake next year, should we choose to do that. So, you know, I see some folks that, you know, were applicants in the audience, and I don't have anybody sign up to speak, but you're certainly welcome to address the board if you so desire. But we had recommendations before, so I know that we have a couple of comments by board members as well. So Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to thank the supervisors who worked on the, and all the committee members, but also everyone who worked on this project, and especially wanted to thank you for the way you categorized and combed through the applications and actually gave us feedback on those applications. What were their strengths? What were their weaknesses? I know in my district, those who were really, you know, not everybody got funded, but what we did get was some insight into the structure, you know, how can you structure, how can we structure our organization and how can we strengthen our application for next year? Why didn't we get it? And what can we do better? And in some cases, you know, it was actually really helpful for some of those organizations. So we're meeting with those folks as best we can to give them that feedback so that maybe next year they have a better shot at it, or maybe some other funding can be identified. So thank you so much for that feedback. That was helpful.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I wanted to note just to that, I think that we do have a portfolio of applications. Again, you know, some that are funded, many that weren't funded, but I think we have, they've been embedded through committees, there've been, you know, scoring that was, you know, provided for each one of the applicants. And I think to Supervisor Frost's comments, that certainly sharing some of the information generally would be of assistance. But I think it also, you know, should other opportunities avail themselves through either, you know, neighborhood and/or other funding, that there's some opportunities then to look to this portfolio if, you know, board members so chose to look at some of these that, you know, again, these are current applications, the needs didn't go away just because some got funding and some didn't. And so I think that it was, you know, a good process, and again, compliments to all the folks that-
To that note, we've also made ourselves available for anybody who wants to follow up and understand a little bit more about their application and the application process. So in our last communication that went out, we've offered up that feedback loop as well, as well as what we've done up to this point.
Okay. All right. So is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on this?
Good afternoon.
Hi, good afternoon.
How are you? Good to see you.
Nice to see you. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Just pull this a little closer. You can lower that podium if that podium's not comfortable height, but-
Down?
Here.
Oh.
There you go.
Yeah, height's not been one of my strengths.
That's good.
Good. All right. Good afternoon.
Do you need the spelling of my name? Do you need the spelling of my name?
You can just state your name.
Okay. So my name is Rebecca Growlek, and I'm coming to you with two hats on, one as the Assistant Program Coordinator of the Ranch at Cordova Respite Club, and also as the Chair of the Sacramento County Adult and Aging Commission. The Respite Club is a day program for people suffering from Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia. In addition to activities, we also provide a mid-morning snack and a lunch. We do not charge for our program. We suggest a $30 a day contribution. Approximately 60% of our caregivers do not pay anything. We turn no one away for financial reasons. For many of our caregivers, we are the only program available where their loved ones can get mental stimulation and where they can get some time to themselves. As Chair of the Adult and Aging Commission, I was extremely saddened to see that not one penny was given, was recommended for a program dedicated to seniors. The 2016 U.S. Census noted that 13.6% of the residents of Sacramento County are age 65 and above. This year, the California Department of Aging issued a report in which they said that 300,000 residents of Sacramento County are age 60 and above. So if you choose not to fund the Respite Club, okay. But I do ask that you fund at least one program dedicated to seniors. They're a significant percentage of your constituents, and they deserve not to be forgotten. Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Appreciate your comments, and thank you for your work on the Adult and Aging Commission as well, so.
Terry, follow me.
Sure. Just come forward, yeah, and just put your name on the record, and yeah, come, Terry. Anyone else that wishes to speak, certainly you're welcome to.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Terry.
I am, my name is Terry, and I am the Activity Coordinator for the Respite Club, which, as Rebecca just explained, is a day program for people with dementia. And we do serve two populations. Our participants with dementia often come into the program confused, scared, sometimes even a little angry. But usually, within just a few days, they make friends in the program. It is a safe place where they belong, they fit in, and they are accepted for exactly who they are. The other segment of the population that we serve is their family caregivers. Sometimes it's a friend, but quite often it's family or spouses. And if anyone has been a caregiver, they know that that can be an overwhelming job, especially in dealing with problems with dementia. And at the Respite Club, every once in a while, we have a really difficult day. We did today, Rebecca and I, but we get to go home at the end of the day. Our staff are volunteers. The caregivers do not get to go home at the end of the day. It's a 24-hour-a-day job. And quite often, it takes a very heavy toll on their physical health and their mental health. So the, we are aptly called the Respite Club because the club is for our participants, the respite is for our caregivers. So I looked through the list of grant recipients, and all are extremely worthy. But I would also state that we shouldn't forget our senior loved ones with special needs either. They sometimes need a helping hand as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. I would just say to you and Rebecca that I know I've been able to devote some neighborhood funding, a small amount, a couple of years ago to the program, and certainly I'm very well aware of it. And again, I'd be happy to talk with you further and see if there's ability to support. I know some of their grant requests obviously were for significant sums of money, and in a lot of cases, it was a very modest amount that's, you know, in the recommendations here. And again, I think certainly to seniors and to needs in our community, certainly the good work that the Respite Club does, I'm well familiar with it, and I know you do a wonderful job out there. And in the event we don't fund it, certainly through this process, again, I think there's some other opportunities. And I would just say that your presence here today and reminding, you know, very good reminders of not only the program, but certainly of the needs for a very broad segment, a growing segment of our community is important, I think, for our consideration, certainly today, but also as we go forward. So thank you both for your work, and I'll be happy to talk with you, certainly early date in the future, so. Okay, do we have anybody else that wishes to address any of the recommendations?
Okay.
If not, then I'll bring it back to the board, and Troy, anything you need to sum up?
No, we just have recommendations that are attached to your staff report that I wanted to call to your attention on the second page of your staff report. It's recommendations 1 through 3.
Okay. All right, we have those?
I would move to approve the recommendations 1 through 3 as proposed in the staff report.
All right, it's moved to the second, and to approve the recommendations outlined, and again, noting our thanks to all those involved.
Yeah, with thanks to Shelley and Crystal and team.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, with that, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks. Okay, next item.
We're just one minute early. For item 55, report back on procurement process and funding for support of social services in Southern Sacramento County.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, we're asking this item to be dropped. At this point, we need some additional time to continue the work we're doing on what kind of services need to be provided. We have a little bit of time on this. The contract will get us through December 31st. Our intent is to have this issue in front, back on the board with a resolution very quickly, but I need some additional time on that.
All right, with that, so noted, so you'll re-agendize this then?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, do we need a motion to drop it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so move. Please vote.
Okay, so we have a little bit of a gap. You have a couple of other items that you can take up.
All right. Maybe I'll take it off agenda, if we can get it done, so let's go ahead and-
What item numbers are they?
Okay, let's go to item 57.
All right.
Appointments from Own Ranks for the City of Sacramento Committee.
Okay.
Is there a presentation?
Ms. Gill?
I was approached by Supervisor Serna about creating a committee to deal with issues that arise out of City of Sacramento, and the proposal was to have District 1 and District 2 to be the representatives to work with the city on myriad of issues. We have an existing homeless subcommittee, but this will be any issues that come up and have more of a formal meeting with them on it.
Okay.
I would just add that it is because it's the only city, too, within our county that is split between two supervisory districts, that that combined with the fact that we have a growing laundry list of issues that Patrick and I work on on a regular basis, it would be nice to kind of formalize that arrangement so that there's some expectation by staff, should we need assistance from staff, that they can be nimble and help us on occasion.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy, do you?
Yeah. I'd just add, and thank you Supervisor Serna for bringing this up. I think it's a good idea. I think it's clear that better coordination is always a good thing among entities locally, not just here, and I can see this even formulating in some other areas. But clearly, that it has been demonstrated that over the last six, eight months, that better formalized communication and coordination, mostly communication between the city and the county, would probably do us all some good. So thank you for bringing this up.
Who's on the committee for the city?
Well, this is an internal committee to this board of supervisors.
But who represents the city side of the equation?
That's not the intent.
It's a, it's a, it's just-
Oh, sorry, it's confusing. It says City of Sacramento Committee.
Right. Well, it's because these are the only two districts that represent the city.
Well, I represent the city.
Well, I'm sorry, that's true. Sliver of it.
It's just, maybe the title's confusing here.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe City-City Coordinating Committee, I know you may be able to find a title that-
We could refine the title. We'll come up with, we'll change the title, we'll come up with something.
Okay.
And report back to you what the name is.
All right. Okay, so the suggestions are then, it would be Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy. Do we need any formal action on that, or is this, you need us to take action?
Yeah, please.
Okay, all right. Then I would move that. A second?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Please vote.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. So is this about homelessness, or is it about communications?
It's about the whole gamut of issues that we experience, us more than anyone else on this board, with the City of Sacramento, ranging from Shot Spotter to homelessness, to crime in general, to a whole host of issues that tend to crop up, and we've noticed that they've been cropping up a lot more lately, so I thought it would be a good idea to formalize.
Okay. I just, you needed to understand a little more about it, what it was about. That's fine, with me, anyway.
Okay.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, the next one's the-
Okay, the next one would be Appointments from Your Own Ranks to the Safety Net Committee.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair, members of the board, a couple of years ago, we had created a Safety Net Subcommittee, which was Supervisor Serna representing District 1, which was, has the city, and Roberta McGlashan representing District 4. With Ms. McGlashan's retirement, Supervisor Serna approached me a couple of months ago that we have a vacancy, and we bring the question back to the board on how to fill that. That's why we're here in front of you. It's a, it's a committee that meets when we need to, and if there's safety, Safety Net items, we bring to that. And its meeting frequency is maybe every other quarter we meet, but we do make some presentations if there's questions about what's happening in the realm of Health and Human Services, DHA. It's a forum to kind of bring that information forward, gives an opportunity for the supervisors to ask questions and for us to follow up, and then any other items that might come up to the community, we have dealt with those in that committee. So right now, what we have is a vacancy, and Supervisor Serna is the current member that's on the committee.
Okay, I have Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost.
You just didn't knock Kennedy off when he was finished.
Okay. All right, Supervisor Frost.
I'd like to volunteer, if I can, to take Roberta's place.
All righty. Any other thoughts, then, about membership?
I'll second that. And I would just add that I'm more than happy to relinquish my position, too, on the committee, if there's someone else on the board that would like to serve for amount of time.
Happy to have you stay, Phil.
Again, you're willing to do it.
Yeah, I'm willing to do it.
But I'd be happy to as well, but I think-
I also think that-
Oh, Patrick, yeah.
That Patrick, quite frankly, has been doing a very fine job on our Mental Health Board, representing us there, and there's still lots to do, so if he's willing, I'd like to nominate Patrick Kennedy.
You okay there, buddy?
Sure. Sure.
I'll second it.
That was a rough handoff there, right? Supervisor Serna? Okay, so, Chair would move that, then, for our Safety Net Committee, that we would appoint members Frost and Kennedy as our Safety Net Committee members?
Second.
Both are smiling. We have a second by Supervisor Peters. Please vote, before we lose the votes.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. Okay.
Okay, we still have a few more minutes, so let's go to Item 59 for your nominations. Okay, you are continuing to October 31st, the Consumers Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento Environmental Commission, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and the South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your items today, your first is the Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Supervisor Peters.
Please continue to November 7th.
Okay. And next, we have the Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Natoli.
I understand that the chiefs are waiting for some information from one of the county departments, so continue this to October 17th.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Recommendations from the chiefs after interviews are Indrajeet Kalari and Jaideep Nijendra, and then continue the remainder to October 31st.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Again, based upon interviews, recommend Palvinder Dillon, and continue the remainder to October 31st.
And that concludes your nominations. So, we're just shy about seven minutes.
So, I know SEIU folks would like a presentation, and I don't know that you could all get it done in eight minutes, so I don't want to rush it, so, because we're going to get called to 2:45 item, so we'll go ahead and, if you're okay with that, because you have several speakers, and I want to allow sufficient time, up to 15 minutes for folks, so I think we'll go ahead and take a brief recess, return at 2:45, and then we'll take the off agenda item following that item, 56. Okay, we'll begin recess at 2:45. Board back into session, and I'll call the roll, we'll establish a quorum.
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy? Peters? Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, if we'll call our next item, please.
Okay, now, we are going to Item 56. It's the Report Back on Procurement Process and Funding for Transitional Housing.
Supervisor Natoli, Members of the Board, what we are in front of you is a product from a couple of weeks ago when we did the budget. There were very specific questions that the board was asking about transitional housing, and the to-do list for us was to figure out, do we need additional capacity? And if we do need additional capacity, what's the process for us to do procurement? And in that discussion, there were questions that came up about the existing contractor. So, for the last couple of weeks, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Lake, and County Council's office have reached out, they've been working with St. John's to answer some of the very specific questions that we have. Given the shortness of the time, not all the questions can be answered as quickly as we thought they could be. So, Britt's going to go over the report where we stand, and our recommendation is for you to hear Britt's report, and for us to come back to you in 30 days and give you a status update on where we stand with those items. Part B of the question you had asked about is that if the board wanted to have additional transitional housing units, what's the process for us to go through that? And our recommendation is to do an RFP, and if that's what the board desires, we'll get an RFP out on the street as quickly as possible, and come back with an award to you at that point. So, that's the structure of the report. I was going to have Mr. Ferguson just go over the nature of the questions we're asking, and what status he has. And Ms. Edwards and Mr. Lake are both here to talk about the transitional housing component. So, Britt?
Thank you, Mr. Gillo, Britt Ferguson, County Chief Fiscal Officer. So, just to provide a short history of how we got here, to sort of supplement what Mr. Gill said, back in March of 2017, your board approved the county's initiatives to reduce homelessness, which included a redesign of the Emergency Family Shelter Program and the addition of a family transitional housing program. In addition to other family housing in the county system, the initiatives call for funding one transitional housing program to serve 19 families. Consistent with the initiatives, on May 15th, 2017, the Department of Human Assistance, or DHA, released a request for proposals for transitional housing for families, and received two proposals, one from St. John's Program for Real Change, who had been providing 19 units of transitional housing, and one from Volunteers of America. Proposals were evaluated by independent review panel from the community, and based on that evaluation on July 2nd, DHA announced that the department would be recommending that VOA be awarded the contract for the provision of family transitional housing. As Mr. Gill indicated at your 2017-18 budget adoption hearings on September 6th, Representatives of St. John's appeared and requested funding from the board in an annualized amount of $730,000 to continue to provide 19 family transitional housing units. At budget hearings, St. John's made the point that without the county's funding, St. John's would lose $767,000 annually in other grant funds and default on two forgivable loans, one from the City of Sacramento and one from the Federal Home Loan Bank, for a total impact on their organization of almost $3 million. At budget hearings, your board voted to include $540,000 to fund a second family transitional housing program for nine months in the adopted budget. On September 12th, your board approved the award of a contract to VOA to provide 25 units of family transitional housing for the remaining nine months of fiscal year 2017-18 for $505,000, with two potential one-year extensions of up to $730,000 each year. As Mr. Gill indicated, you requested a report back today on issues raised by St. John's request. As we see it, and as outlined in the report, there are at least five issues raised by that request. The first was, does St. John's need the county's funding to avoid a default on the Federal Home Loan Bank, or FHLB loan, and the City of Sacramento loan? Second, will the county, a loss of county funding result in a loss of other funding, and if so, how much? Third, what is the county's interest and appropriate role in helping St. John's avoid a loan default and loss of other funding, and what are the long-term implications of such action? And then, next, does the county need, in fact, need an additional 19 transitional housing units for families experiencing homelessness? And then finally, if the county does need additional transitional housing units, what is the appropriate process to procure them? As you have seen in the staff report, and will hear this afternoon, and as Mr. Gill indicated in the fairly short time available, we have not been able to resolve all of these issues, and normally, we would not have presented the board with a report that left so many questions unanswered, but we understood the board's desire to discuss St. John's request at this meeting, so we have tried to lay out as best we can what we know and what we don't know at this time. As Mr. Gill also indicated, at this point, we're recommending that the board receive the report and direct us to continue to work with St. John's over the next 30 days to resolve the outstanding questions that have been identified, and if the board desires, to contract for additional units of transitional housing, direct staff to initiate a request of proposal process. Cindy Kavanaugh, the county's Director of Homeless Initiatives, and I will take a moment to address some of the issues in the staff report following our presentation. Cindy and I, Ann Edwards, Director of Human Assistance, and other staff here are here and available to answer any questions the board may have. Turning to the first issue very briefly, does St. John needs the county funding to avoid default on the FHLB and City of Sacramento loan? Just a little bit of background on that. In August of 2016, St. John received an $800,000 forgivable loan through the Federal Home Loan Bank of San Francisco's Affordable Housing Program to purchase and renovate property located at 8395 Jackson Road. According to St. John's, the property is being used to provide an additional 22 transitional housing bedrooms to serve 90 women and children, and under the terms of the loan, St. John's does not need to make any debt service payments, and the loan is, will be forgiven in 15 years if all programmatic conditions are met. According to St. John's, the FHLB loan was awarded based on scoring of the application, which included a number, the number of clients served, and according to them, if county funding is eliminated, the score would drop below a required threshold. It kind of was eliminated, our beds were not filled, and the loan would be at risk of default. We've requested a copy of St. John's loan application and FHLB evaluation and scoring. St. John's has not provided their loan application, and has indicated that they did not receive the scoring breakout from the FHLB. We also asked for a contact person at the FHLB, and St. John's declined to provide a name. So, as of now, we can't confirm that loss of 19 units will actually, or potentially, trigger a default, or what the consequences and remedy might be, but we will, and our intent is to continue to work with St. John's to try and confirm and that information. We did ask the question, how are 19 units, which are not new, relates to the new housing units created as a result of the loan for the purchase of the new building? St. John's indicated that our units had been moved to the new building, and the number of units requirement actually applies to two buildings. Again, we can't confirm this, or how this works with their loan application. And again, we propose to continue to work with St. John's to try and resolve that issue. In addition, in May of 2017, St. John's received a 15-year, $600,000 forgivable loan from the City of Sacramento for the same project. Staff has conducted a preliminary review of the loan documents provided by St. John's. It cannot really clearly identify how loss of county funding in and of itself will trigger a default, but will continue to work with St. John's on that issue. We've only had a little bit of time to look at that. If St. John's interpretation of their loan agreement is correct, and it would result, loss of our funding would result in, or loss of the 19 units would result in a default provision under the FHLB loan, the question remains as to whether the loss of county funding would in fact mean St. John's could fill the 19 beds. If that really gets to the sort of financial condition of St. John's, what their other alternatives are for providing funding to maintain those units. St. John's has indicated that they already raised over $2 million in private donations, and that while they might be able to raise the additional $730,000 annually, it would take some time. In the time available, we could not reach any conclusions about St. John's financial status or ability to raise additional funds. The report lays out some facts about their fiscal situation that shows that in, basically in 14, in calendar year 14 and 15, they have a calendar year, fiscal year, they basically spent more than they brought in, and reduced their unrestricted assets.
Counties do that from time to time.
Yeah, they, we do, we have. And then in 2016, they brought in revenue more, and they spent and increased their unrestricted assets to $1.1 million. We have looked at their 2017 budget, which is, as you know, just a budget and expenditure plan, but it shows that they're budgeted to bring in more in revenue than they spend, generating a surplus of about $400,000. There's some information in there about, questions about their cash flow situation, and again, we haven't had a chance to look at that in depth, and we hope to work with them on that, to see what their actual cash situation is. The second issue is, will the loss of funding result in the loss of other funding, the loss of the county funding result in loss of other funding? We focus particularly on matching requirements. They do receive federal funds that have a match requirement, specifically the CalFresh SNAP to Skills Program. That's a fairly new grant for them, so it's really not so much a historical issue as a future issue. They do receive, bring in over $3 million, or at least in their budget are projected to bring in over $3 million in other funding besides grant funding. It's not clear to us to what extent that money would be available to match the SNAP to Skills Program. The only requirement of that federal funding is that the match not be other federal funding, so it is legally possible to use other funds to match that. And St. John's just recently, because we've been meeting as we've been going along, clarified that some of the lost revenue would be what they refer to as per capita funding for other grants. We don't have information from other grants. We don't have information on what those grants are, or how they're structured, and so we need some time to look at that. The issue there, of course, is per capita funding suggests that for our, for our program, there, they would get other funding to help supplement our money for the beds that we have, and part of the question there is how much of that is covering fixed costs, which would be there anyway, and how much is covering variable costs that would actually decrease if our beds weren't in use, and how that all fits together. And again, we need some time to look at that. And then the third issue, what is the county's interest and appropriate role in helping St. John's avoid loan default and loss of other funding, and what are the long-term implications of such an action? So, as I think was, they made clear in their presentations to you at budget hearings, St. John's request for additional funding did not really focus on the need for 19 additional transitional housing units. They really focused on requesting general assistance in order to avoid the loan default and the loss of other revenue. And again, we haven't been able to confirm whether that is in fact true, but we will work with them on that. But the question raised here is whether and under what circumstances should the county be essentially the funder of last resort for nonprofit organizations? And I, as we said in our staff report, we generally don't believe it's prudent for the county to assume that role. Our primary role is to provide services to the citizens in our community, either directly through our staff or through contracting, and not necessarily to support nonprofits financially. But we did identify that if the board is interested in providing financial assistance to a nonprofit organization, there are four factors that probably should be considered. One, what services is the organization providing, and does the county believe those services are needed? Second, are there other organizations that could provide those services more effectively or at less cost to the county, as you might determine through an RFP process, for example? Third, can the county ensure that the services we want will be in fact provided for our funding? And then finally, what level of funding will be needed, and how long will it be needed? That gets to financial situation, gets to, you know, how long a commitment might be needed. The staff report addresses some of these issues, and again, in some cases, we can't fully answer those. The fourth issue is, does the county need another 19 family transitional housing beds? And I'm going to let Cindy Kavanaugh go ahead and address that issue.
Good afternoon, Cindy Kavanaugh, County Director of Homeless Initiatives. I'm not sure I can speak that fast and concisely, but I'll try. Staff does not recommend funding additional transitional housing beds for families experiencing homelessness at this time in its newly redesigned family system under County Homeless Initiative Number 1. Rather, staff recommends completing the implementation, which is well underway of that initiative, and close monitoring of the results, including looking at how long folks are homelessness, how long assistance is provided, based on which kind of assistance, how many exits, how are people finding their way to permanent housing and are successful in that, what's the increased incumbent employment, and long-term stability? So, these are all measures we're looking at, monitoring with these initiatives and interventions. We would consider then expanding the most critical components to impact family homelessness, based on that experience and outcome. So, it could be more diversion assistance, help people, prevent them from ever becoming homeless, as long as they can stay in safe housing, maybe more sheltering, perhaps more rehousing services, particularly helping people in this tough rental market, or more transitional housing, or even permanent supportive housing. My best guess at this time is that we have rather thinly funded the diversion assistance, and given everything we know about who's entering homelessness, that could be a very effective strategy. But also, on the rehousing side, we know this extra help is needed in finding housing in this tough market. Just a quick reminder of the objectives of the family system. We want to help families avoid homelessness altogether with the diversion assistance. We want to provide easier access to shelter and be able to shelter everyone, particularly literally homeless families and families with high barriers to rehousing and stability. And we want to help families return to permanent homes as quickly as possible, supporting them either in a longer-term stay, as in transitional housing, or in supporting them as they transition to permanent housing more quickly. Now, you'll recall that, and certainly Britt covered, that we did not have a one-size-fits-all in our response to family homelessness, and recognized many pathways out of homelessness. We've, Britt talked about the 19 measure for 19 units for transitional housing, but we also funded approximately 268 families in the shelter system. These are within the context of other resources within our continuum, so I wanted to make sure we understood that according to the last housing inventory count, which I believe is undercounting in a few areas, there are 89 family units of transitional housing with 138 beds, and 103 units for families in shelters for 300 beds. Not quite on par, but, you know, pretty close, on par to each other, which is probably a bit heavy on the transitional housing side.
I have a couple of questions, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Wait. Yeah, no, you say, you want to go?
I'm sorry.
No, no.
I'll wait until she's down.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just, a couple more sentences. Just to remind us that we were investing 1.35 million for those 238 families and about 730,000 for the 19 families annually. There is a bit of good news in the 2017 point-in-time count, which might be indicated from this robust CalWorks resources coming into the system for both rehousing and shelter and emergency assistance. Families with children declined, the homelessness declined by 25% from 2015. We know sometimes things are undercounted, but that is what the count said. And I am done. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Okay, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy.
Okay. First of all, please bear with my voice. I guess I'm scratching my head a little bit because the question is, does the county need another 19 transitional housing beds? And I think all of us would agree, of course we do. So, of course we do. We need more of everything. We need more of everything. So to say that you're not, to answer the question by saying we're not recommending funding, they're two different things. I think you need to preface the answer substantially with, all things being equal, or given the limited amount of resources to implement the trajectory we set for ourselves, the initiatives, this is the best funding, this is the best location for, the best placement for the funding, all other things being equal. But of course, we need more transitional housing, just like we need more permanent supportive, just like we need more shelter space. We need more of everything in the continuum, as far as I'm concerned.
Point well taken.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Actually, that's exactly how I was going to start. But, so let me go to a specific point, though, that you, I mean, and what, so what the staff report says, I mean, it's been characterized as we don't need more, as Supervisor Serna said, which I don't think you'll find anybody in this room that would think we don't need more. But what it does say is that transitional beds are not the most critical gap in our system. And I think that's part of what we forget to do, is we forget to look at this as a system. And we look at it as, you know, this program and that program and that program. And that's where we got here, frankly. That's where, also, when we had the divine intervention to hire you, it was to come up with a system. Instead of doing this as stopgap measure after stopgap measure and having no accountability and all, and I think that that's the critical point to be made here, and I agree with Supervisor Serna. You did say diversion assistance, I believe, maybe I'm putting words in your mouth, but I don't want to do that, but I believe you said diversion assistance is where you, as our staff that makes recommendations, would, if we were going to put more money at this point, would prefer to put more funding in over transitional housing. Did I hear that right?
I would not recommend anything at this time. Give our system a chance. This is probably the initiative and the component that we are most excited about. If I were to guess, knowing that we gave, I don't know, 30,000 to diversion assistance, that's not going to, that's not going to go very far. We're testing the principle. So that was my best guess at this point. Let us go forward and implement.
Which is an interesting point from, I mean, I would think most staff people sitting there at the podium being asked the question would say, yeah, I'll take it.
I mean, I will take fund, I will take more money, honestly. It's the individuals on the street. If you were to ask me where, I will answer where, which I think is with what's going to happen this winter, what's going to happen with enforcement. We need to put money there for services for that. I will give an answer, but for this.
Okay. I got it. Thanks.
I want to weigh in because some of this is a bit of a puzzle to me and I appreciate your explanation. And obviously, we went through, going back to last fall and even last summer, through the workshops, and I get it, that, you know, we worked through, you know, a planning effort and certainly set some priorities, but I, to the point made a moment ago by Supervisor Kennedy, I'm going to come at it a little differently, but I can't see how this community would give up beds. Now, we don't know exactly what would happen if we didn't fund this. This board certainly has expressed a desire to set aside that funding. And when I look at this report, and obviously you've responding to questions by this board and doing due diligence, but again, I'm a bit puzzled, in all honesty, that we would, with what's contained here and what's been presented, continue to say, well, because we had this plan, that that's where the money needs to go if the board desires to retain beds that either are coming online or have been made available, or units that have been made available. And I guess my answer to all this would be, unless we're darn sure we've solved shelter issues for women and children in this community, then we best hold on to what we've got in this community and build upon that. And that's part of what the plan is. And it's not, this is not directed so much at you, Cindy, as it's just, you know, as I read through this, I said this to Navgill yesterday, and I'm going to say it here, you know, there is a lot loaded into this response back. And yet, the bottom line is, and the thing that got to me the most, though, was this very question, do we need it? I mean, that question, it's self-answered in this community. Yeah, we've had these chambers full of folks. We need it. And to argue that, you know, because we chose to put additional general fund money aside to grow our effort to do a full shelter service, you know, shelter program to bolster other efforts, that somehow women and children fall out of that equation and fall down that ladder and that the pathways, that's the other thing, is that we have a program that's criticized, not so subtly in this, for being a clean and sober approach, for one that has a vocational aspect to it that may require a time in the program that's longer, but hopefully, when people come out at the end of it, they've gotten their children back that are already, a lot of times, outside of that. We reunify children and their families. You help them overcome addictions. You help them get their job training, get their lives back together. Why we would say no to that for three-quarters of a million dollars when they're raising 10 times that in the private sector to support this? That question to me is a puzzle because here, everything I read here, certainly this board can give the direction, we set the money aside, we ought to be glad we've got a provider in this community, along with other providers that are willing to. Citing a shelter is no easy task. Bringing beds on is no easy task. And we can have different pathways. And I think what you've brought, certainly spending your time with us, is, you know, looking to broaden that. But I think the Supervisor Serna's question in common is that we need more of all of this. And why, when we've got a provider that's willing to do that, we're putting up such a fuss about this? We can certainly hold people accountable, but I guess I just don't get it.
So I was only meaning to answer from a systems perspective. What does the, and really Supervisor Serna is correct, the right question is, what is the most critical need? Not having, not feeling this was the opportunity to revisit all of that. I didn't cover everything. Trying to use data to answer the question, you know, how are we doing with family homelessness? And it does raise relative to other things. 95% were sheltered in the point in time. We are increasing the bed capacity from 19 to 25. Certainly, this board can decide that it wants additional transitional housing for families. But I'm just trying to answer the question from a systems perspective, using data, what do we know?
I guess I just would simply say that 44 is better than 25 anytime. The math is pretty simple. And that even if it doesn't, you know, include male head of household, still, I think, when I look at other parts of our system, and again, I didn't really get the sense that there was this, you know, there was a lot of focus on St. John's, and that was some of the questions that were asked, but what about reunification in children that are in a foster care system, those that are placed out of home? You know, just bringing them back under the umbrella of a program that could do that, one, the benefit of the family, but just the financial benefit. There's no analysis of what those positive impacts are to the system, assuming they are positive. I guess nobody even analyzed that. Okay. Susan Peters.
This discussion that's going on about whether we need 19 more beds or not, I kind of took what you said, if you, to relate it more to money, and then tell me if I'm wrong, that if you had 750,000, or in this case, 540,000, that you would spend it in a different area. Is that what you're saying?
I wasn't asked that question in this report, but I believe the system has, I would come forward with a different recommendation if I were given that amount of money than transitional housing for families.
Someone said that you were hired through divine inspiration, so.
Wow.
Well, I am asking the question.
Yeah, I think we both are.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would not be my recommendation for the highest and best use. I think we have, it's quite a bit of money. If you look at what we're trying to do with a much larger unsheltered population, whether it's individuals or, I mean, basically individuals, we're doing it much more on a shoestring. So I feel we are on the right track with the family system. If, is it an ironclad, no family would be homeless? Probably not. Is it that we are creating the systems to really capture those and move them out of homelessness quickly? Then the answer is yes. Traditionally, we have not been able to call some programs and say, can you place a family? If you want us to solve homelessness, you need to let us get the system that works to do that.
Supervisors, if I may jump in real quick here, just to provide some historical contextual reminder, what we presented a few weeks ago at the budget hearings, we stood to lose the 19 beds that St. John's provided. When we lost the CalWorks money that we were using to pay for transitional housing, the board voted to put general fund money in to replace that. We went through a procurement process to use those funds and we, with the board's approval, contracted for 25 beds. So if you compare the number of transitional housing beds we have now versus what we had just six months ago, we have more capacity for transitional housing. So I wanted to point that out. And I'll speak as the deputy county executive for social services, that if, I do believe there is a more impactful use of $540,000 than add additional transitional housing on top of what our current capacity is. I think diversion money, I think more rehousing funds to support what we're going to be doing with our rehousing shelter and our flexible supportive rehousing, I think those will have more impact on the overall system, including for families, than additional funding for transitional housing.
Okay. I think one of the problems or struggles I've had with the discussion over the last couple of months is the board approved a program for homelessness in June, and we haven't let it begin to work yet. And we continue to pick it apart and, I don't know if you'd say criticize it, but certainly not giving it a chance to work. And my worry about that is just spending money willy-nilly is not, if it's unfocused, it's wasted money. I don't know what's going on with St. John's with being unresponsive to questions posed by county staff. I would set that aside and if the board decides it wants to go to his money, I would say we have to go through an RFP process because that's what the county ordinances say. But I want to be sure that we, after we did all this work on the homeless program, that we're getting ready to start, that we have funded it to a level that it could be successful. So, thank you.
Suitor Frost.
I want to direct the conversation back to the comments that you made in relation to, you had been meeting with St. John's and requesting information and you're still working your way through that information. Does the county have a legal obligation to get to the bottom of, you know, the money and where it's going and how it's applied and whether or not it's needed to sustain a business? And is it, you mentioned, is it appropriate to fund them to keep them from going into default on a loan? So do we have, we do not have the information, it sounds like we, there's more information we need from St. John's. Are they able to, will they be able to bring that information or are we, is that in the process?
So in terms of the legal, I don't know that we have a legal obligation. I think the way I would characterize it is sort of a fiduciary responsibility to be prudent in use of public funds. And when you have a request before you that involves what is essentially a request to shore up an organization potentially as long as 15 years, which is the extent of their forgivable loans, it would be prudent to make sure that it's really needed, what the consequences would be, and to make sure that, to understand what's going on, both with how the organization operates in terms of the benefits we're receiving and the, what is really needed and how that fits into their finances and how our money would be used. So in terms of providing that information, they have provided some information. They provided a substantial amount of information. There's still a significant amount that we have not yet seen, some of which, I don't know if we'll be able to get it all. They have committed to providing us some more information and our intent is to continue to work with them as long as we can to try and get that information so that we can do the sort of analysis that would allow us to provide answers to the questions, to your board, answers to your board for the questions that we've identified as we think would be necessary to consider that sort of a request.
But we're not, we're not talking about a 15-year bridge. We're talking about 2017, 18, correct?
So the only request they made to you was to continue to fund them because if their position was, if you didn't, they would lose, they would potentially default on loans and lose match funding. Those loans are 15-year loans. They didn't ask for 15 years of funding, but those loans are 15-year loans. We did ask them, one of the questions we asked them was, so what long-term financial planning have they done? Have they done multi-year forecasts? Knowing that they just received a loan and it expanded their program significantly, had they done any, did they have any multi-year forecasts so we could get a sense of sort of their longer-term financial situation? They said they had not done that. So that's the sort of thing we want to look at carefully, obviously, in the context of this kind of a request.
And I just want to also just mention that I think St. John's has done great work and my heart wants to fund that. My heart wants to fund everyone, but so, you know, I, it sounds like we don't have all the information we need at this point. That's what I'm, is that what I'm hearing? I'm hearing that.
That's correct. Well, it's a question A and B. A, we're going to continue to work with St. John's to get the information that we need. B, if the board so desires, we can do an RFP to procure more than 19 beds. And that will be the question, whoever bids will end up being the successful bidder. We're not predetermining that.
But you're saying at this point in time, we really don't need 19 more beds?
That is what our staff looked at the question and that's what we're coming back with, is their recommendation is, including mine, is that we have a system, that's what it is. I do apologize that maybe the language could have been written a little bit differently, that we did not mean to imply that there's no need to have them. It's just a system that we've put in place that you gave us the authority to, we're executing on that. Of course, additional money, additional beds, we can always use that. We could have written that differently, but at this point, what Ms. Kavanaugh was saying is that her recommendation through Paul has been that if you're going to have additional funds available, her recommendation will be to put it somewhere else.
Supervisor Serna?
Thanks. So I want to make sure I understand this correctly, Britt, because I think what I heard you suggest is that St. John's competed, they weren't selected, the funds that they were competing for, for this particular use, were, was intended to complement an assemblage of other funding sources, including loans? No?
No. The funds that they competed for were intended to purchase 19 and then it turned out to be 25 beds of transitional housing. They, as we understand it, and again, we're still looking at this, but they are basically saying that they, either through match or through this per capita funding, are able to draw down other funds from other grants to supplement our money in order to provide additional services as part of their program for ours and others, I presume. We don't know exactly how that, we haven't yet been able to figure that out exactly, but we weren't intentionally structuring it so that they could draw down other funds.
Supervisor Serna, I think the confusion came in last month when we've been discussing this. We have a couple of documents that I think as they were making their case on how vital this funding is for them, there was a linkage that seems to be created, and there's a document we attached that says, here's county funding, it leverages this. So that started the question that I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, is that So that started the question that I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, is that what's the status for our money? Is it leveraging? Is it not leveraging? And that's what Brett's getting at, is that he's looking at it. If our money is leveraging that, I'm just purely speculating, I'm not saying that's the case, is that then issue for us becomes, it's not a gap till June 30th. Then it becomes a 15-year issue.
Structural gap.
Structural gap. And I'm not suggesting we should take it on, we just want to be able to advise you what the structural gap is. St. John's might have other means of fundraising, have other donors, so that's their business. Our question's more just to see that document that we received and verify what's the information in there.
I guess the other way to ask it is, and maybe it's better suited to ask St. John's executive staff, but is it the case that there was a mission that St. John's set out to do in terms of transitional housing? It relied heavily on being awarded the funds, they took a risk, the competition didn't work out the way they wanted, and now we find ourselves in this situation? I guess what I'm asking is, how true is that statement?
I think that's probably
That's pretty accurate.
Probably a fairly accurate statement.
From our point of view.
From our perspective, yeah.
I want to ask a question, Brett, Mr. Serna, if you have anything else? Okay. Just on this, the issues raised in the report and relates to the cash flow. Well, obviously, you had a big capital program.
True.
And I think you identified that certainly in writing, you said it in your comments. But I guess, there aren't too many nonprofits. Again, I jokingly said that about counties, but, you know, again, we have a little more reliance on quarterly distributions and so forth, and nonprofits, whether they be, you know, big, medium, or small, you know, have to work to raise the money through, and whether they do it through spaghetti feeds, or through large events, or through philanthropy amongst their board members and others. And, you know, it's certainly a reasonable point to talk about, but, again, I just, it seems to me that, you know, you want, you want organizations financially solvent, but if they can, the contract with the county has been to provide the 19 units of service. I guess my question, have they provided that and their ability to do that? Now, obviously, if the program were to close, they wouldn't be able to do that. And I think, you know, when I saw that information early in the summer, I'll just say from my perspective, that, you know, people are going to make the case, obviously, how it's going to impact them. And, you know, you can tie it to, you know, loans or to other operational aspects, but the cash flow issue, you're going to have, you know, it's going to be up and down, ebb and flow through the course of a year, maybe even over through several, several years. And I saw is there something particularly, you know, outstanding or odd about the St. John's versus other nonprofits? And I doubt that we've bored into other nonprofits as much as this, but obviously, this point's before, so I guess I'm curious for your take on it.
Yeah. So, our internal audits division did conduct a review of their, fiscal review of a couple prior years' worth of funding, and did identify some cash flow issues. And of course, they have had some cash flow issues. And as they've pointed out, and as you note, their point is, well, they, it's sort of a timing issue. They have in the early part of the year, they have more expenses and less revenue. We haven't been able to confirm that, we want to look at that. I think, I think part of the issue here and why we've really focused on this question of fiscal viability is less because of the contracting for 19 units. That's partly an issue of need, but more on the issue of the request for what is essentially, potentially, long-term financial support to deal with their, their overall financial situation. And so one of the questions that we had was, you know, in, let's assume that in fact, their understanding, which, and so they themselves said they haven't seen their rating sheet, but their understanding of how their loan works is right, and it would potentially jeopardize their loan. Is their capacity, what is their capacity in the short term or long term to generate other revenue? And that's, that's the context in which we're looking at that, their overall financial situation. If it, if it's in fact positive, if in fact they do have over $1 million in unrestricted assets, if they have cash, I know they have a line of credit, if they have, if they're going to run a surplus this year, that might suggest maybe they don't need our money as much as they thought they did in order to get by. On the other hand, if they are in more dire financial, if it's more, less positive than that, they may need our money. But on the other hand, then we want to look at what, you know, what is their long-term situation in terms of what kind of commitment ultimately is made when we go through the RFP process? So, I think that is really more of what we were looking at. It was, it was the context in which they made the plea for your support, which, as you recall, was really not a plea or an argument that we needed 19 additional beds. It was more an argument they needed this in order to deal with their own financial situation.
Brett, let me ask you one other question. It was touched upon in the report, and I know it's been something that, I mean, obviously, county staff, DHA, and maybe your office as well, but with regards to the SNAP funding, I know there were some differences that needed to be ironed out, and I think we sought, you know, both St. John's but county, you know, other state and federal entities to weigh in on that. But in this, this is a reference to disallow a significant amount of claims. I thought that most of those issues had been resolved, and yet I still understand that there's outstanding, maybe several hundred thousand dollars in claims. And if we've, if we've resolved issues, then why is it we still have that amount of money? And I guess I can explain that.
I'll ask Ann Edwards to address that specific question, but I will just mention that the context that we were looking at that in is, if part of the other money that they draw down is premised on drawing down, they've put in their budget a million, two or so in money from the SNAP program. If they're not going to get that for reasons unrelated to our contribution, then that really gets to the issue of how much money they would actually lose as a result of our reduction in funding.
And before you leave though, I just, the point I would make about cash flow, that if we're sitting on claims that are legitimate and payable, then we could certainly help the cash flow a bit too, again, if those services are being provided and they're claimable. So, thanks. But I'd like to hear from Ann where we are with.
Good afternoon, Ann Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. DHA has been working very closely with St. John's staff to reconcile invoices around the SNAP to Skills program. It's a new, complicated, complex program, and I know it's been a huge challenge for St. John's, as it has for DHA staff as well. We've come a long way in the last six, eight weeks in terms of really getting a better handle on what's allowable, what's not allowable, and the means in which we receive invoices and backup documentation. We're not completely there yet, but we're getting very, very close. And it's been a joint effort. I have to give a hats off to Heidi Stauffer from St. John's, their fiscal person. She's been extraordinary to work with, and we're getting really close to having it all resolved. But it is a work in progress.
And if I may, just add on Ann's behalf, she won't say it, but her staff had done a yeoman's job in trying to implement something that is really breaking new ground. So, the confusions over the regulations is an understandable thing when you're trying to do something new, and her staff did a yeoman's job.
No, I appreciate that. And again, I'm aware of that. But so then, we, it's your belief that within the next few weeks, I'm just, I'm saying few weeks, but if that's not it, if it's a few months, but in a short amount of time, that the claims, assuming they're appropriately submitted and so forth, that those can be, those reimbursements can be made?
I didn't speak to the person that's working on it before coming here today, so I can't answer that completely. But I know that each claim is a binder about this thick. It takes a fair amount of time to go through and analyze it. This is a high-risk program because of the federal dollars. And we know the program will be audited, and so we're being very, very cautious. We have been processing and paying as fast as we possibly can. There are still some outstanding, and there's still some outstanding issues that we're going back and forth with, with St. John's, but everyone is giving it more than 100%.
Well, and the reason I ask is because when I talk about, when I hear about cash flow on one hand, and then obviously, this is part of the overall spectrum of providing services and claiming for services, and if there are claims, again, going back to April or May, for whatever reasons, good or otherwise, that's still, you know, for a nonprofit to be in the latter part of September and not be able to get, you know, some resolution around that, again, and then just, again, not saying people aren't working hard, but I just, that, you know, that can affect, you know, the bottom line, you know? Because again, and other things, and you're pulling from other funds, you're waiting for other monies to come in, and so it certainly can, can have a significant effect, a significant effect on a nonprofit. So, and I know we want to be careful, I get that, so, okay, thanks. All right. Any other board member questions? I don't have anybody signed to speak, but I see Renee's here, and I do have some folks now. Okay. I have Michelle Stebe and Mark Wies. I don't know in particular order, so, and if there are others, certainly. Michelle, good afternoon.
Thank you.
I'm not going to put the clock on.
Thank you.
There's a lot of information here, so we'll try to keep this concise, but I want to
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to try to, too. My name's Michelle Stebe, I represent St. John's. First, want to thank you for your leadership and at least setting aside additional monies for transitional housing for single mother-led families dealing with addiction, wanting their children to be safe. Just so you're aware, we now sit on a waiting list, a daily waiting list of over 500 women and children. So I appreciate that the, and that's after our expansion. I appreciate that the homeless count shows a drop, but that's definitely different than what we're seeing at St. John's. We are definitely working with the county staff to better, help them better understand our program. There's been a lot of misunderstandings, there's a lot of inaccuracies in that report. We provided, just to give you a sense, 260 pages of information. We sat down with them for a couple hours on, what's today, Tuesday? So Monday morning, and we have some more information that we need to bring forward, and we'll do that. We're really committed to clearing up the understandings and the inaccuracies. But I want to point out a couple of really important facts that continue to come up. One is, we're not talking about 19 beds. People keep saying 19 beds. I've had to correct staff many times on this. It's 19 units for families, which is really 57 women and children. That's a really important point that needs to, you know, be accurately represented. We are a nonprofit that in the last 10 years has gone from a million-dollar nonprofit that was 80% reliant on this county contract, serving about 100 women and children a day, to a program now that serves up to 270 a day for 12 to 18 months. That same county contract, the one we're here talking about today, represents less than 10% of our funding. So St. John's has worked really hard to diversify our funding sources, to not be coming back to the county and asking for more and more, even though we've grown and grown. And it's a really good thing, and I think it's something that needs to be better recognized by county staff, when we've been able to, to bring monies in from outside funders to help expand our program. FHLB has given over $1.6 million to St. John's. The city of Sacramento, it was an unprecedented gift to help us grow our services, and it's been a really positive thing, and it's really a shame to me that that's looked on in not a positive light by, by staff. That said, we're committed to help, like I said, clear up these inaccuracies and the, and the misinformation, and we'll continue to work with them to do so. I want to say a couple other things. Cindy, in her remarks, Cindy Kavanaugh, said, well, you know, there was a lot of guesses. I can guess that this is going to happen, I can guess that that's going to happen. St. John's is a proven model, and we don't work for everyone, but for women and children struggling with addiction, struggling with domestic violence, struggling with lack of education, it works. These women come in, they're a drain on the community in terms of public subsidies, and they come out and they're a contributor to the community. They're earning over $1,850 a month. That is something that we should all be celebrating, and that's something that is very, very unique in this community, especially as it relates to single mother-led families. I think in close, I just, again, want to thank you for your leadership. Again, we're committed to working to clear up some of this misinformation, but today, we really need to know that we're going to have you behind us as we close out our contract. Our contract ends on September 30th, and it's really, really important that we know we have your commitment behind us. So, thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Any questions, Michelle? Okay, none. Mark?
Good afternoon, Mark. Good afternoon, Chairman Tolle, members of the Board. Mark Wies here as a Board Director, member of the Board of Directors of St. John's Programs. I'll keep it brief. Michelle hit everything. You guys have bantered about this, we've all have for, since February, when, when the matter first came out. We don't want to be here next year. You hit it on the head, Supervisor Tolle, all of you did, that we're looking at a 10% gap in the annual budget right now. Programs are coming in place, we want to become self-sufficient. This will help get us there, so we're not back here next year. There's been a lot of growth, new programs, the CCTRP program, the SNAP program, which Ms. Edwards said, it is a complicated program. Staff has worked diligently on it to try and get it funded. It's behind, it's caused problems, that's why we're here also. All of the above, your, the administrative time you've dedicated, you've directed staff, your time, heck, that's probably half of the $540,000 right there. But I want to thank you all for getting to this point. If we have to go an RFP for $540,000, let's do it. If you can make a direction on it right now, and hopefully, next year, 18 months, we're not back here again because we are self-sufficient. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Thanks, Michelle. Anybody else on this item? Okay. If not, I'll bring you back to the Board then. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So, Michelle asked for, at the end of her testimony, asked for an understanding of the Board's support for St. John's. I don't think there's any of us that don't support St. John's, but this is a more surgical question about, about funding for a specific use and getting through some misunderstandings. I guess I'm wondering, and then looking at you, Mr. Gill, if it's the will of the Board to give some indication that there's interest in an RFP process, what are the outside dates of award?
I'm seeing four weeks. Is that a month?
Well, that's four weeks.
I'm getting information.
It typically takes about four months. We could certainly shorten that timeframe, should it be your desire.
And that, my
And that's from beginning, that's from drafting it, releasing it, bidders conference, applications, review process, posting, protest period, all of that.
And again, that doesn't mean that at the end of the process, St. John's necessarily is selected.
That is accurate.
And we can look at changing some of the timelines on that. If the Board, if that's the direction we got into, I think I would like to work with staff, see if we can get this back to you as quickly as possible. We already have an RFP that we did on this, so there is part of this time crunch, we can take that out. Some of the appeal process, we've got to keep that in there for fairness purpose, but I think if that's the desire, it won't be four months, it'll be in sooner than that.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, several things. One is, I guess one of my threshold levels of discomfort is that, you know, we've had hearing after hearing after hearing. We went through painstaking investigation into what programs we think will work, we put together a system. The system is something that I really appreciated because it's, for the first time, more than ever before, it's data-driven, and it's a fairly robust and complex system. And here we are, taking it apart before it's even had a chance to work, to be implemented. Not only that, but I've got two people at least that have, right here on staff, said that if you want to give resources to the homeless issue, that there are other areas that they feel would be more cost-effective and more effective, meaning help more people, more homeless people, if we were to put these in other areas. However good it makes us feel to put it in one area, if I'm being told by people who have the data, who live by that data, who have analyzed that data, and are our industry experts telling me that this money could be spent better to help more people, it gives me a great pause. So I'm really uncomfortable in overriding that and going in a different direction, frankly, because it makes me feel good. And to be honest with you, giving St. John's $540,000 would probably make me feel pretty good. But I just, from a sound governmental public policy standpoint, I've got some real hesitation with it. That's number one. The second thing is, is that the only way that I could ever support going forward with dedicating more resources to transitional housing over giving it to some other areas that we've been told might be more beneficial, would be through an RFP process. That's just, that's transparency, it's, you know, an honest way of doing it. You know, let's face it, St. John's would stand a good chance of prevailing in that. I mean, they've done good work in the past. I mean, they've done good work in the past. But I want to put another layer on it, that probably isn't going to be received real well by staff, in that it would most likely make it difficult to really shorten that time period. And I just want to throw out, throw this out, and if it's not here, then I'd like to look at doing it somewhere else. And that's, you know, we've been working, the county staff has, as well as my office, and with the city, and with Sutter Hospital, with social finance, to look at a pay-for-success model, and infusing that in. And in fact, we had a meeting recently over with city staff and county staff to talk about where are some opportunities we could do that, maybe to pilot it, because it's fairly new to this area now. Homeless programs have been paid for through pay-for-success in Massachusetts, Santa Clara, Los Angeles, Denver. So, I mean, it's not a new thing. It's out there. It's happened. They have the matrices already in place that you could put into an RFP and make it part of this process. I'd really like to see that. It can be done in a couple of ways, one of two ways. It could be, you find a third party, which, according to social finance, who I would recommend we work with to put together something, and frankly, they volunteered to do so. They have actually said that, as opposed to things like, and I'm not picking on anything the city's doing, but as opposed to whole-person care, you know, the report that they came up with for the city and the county, basically said that our programs of housing and supportive housing and the different things that we're doing are far more attractive to outside funders than would be whole-person care, for example. There are organizations, individuals, philanthropists throughout the country that are looking at funding these types of things. And the way it works is, they would fund it, and then, once the bidder, once the vendor reaches certain benchmarks, then we would reimburse. So it's kind of a, make sure you get the results you want without having to, you know, risk public funds to do it. It's been, like I said, it's happening across the country. I think it's something that's overdue here, and I'd love to see the county of Sacramento be the first local entity to incorporate it. Another way to do it would be a simpler model, and that's just that we don't invite the third party, because if that takes too long or something, we don't do that, and we just fund ourselves. But we still have those performance matrices that have to be met in order to reach certain funding cycles. I would be very encouraged, if we could, if we are going to do an RFP, that we could incorporate some kind of pay-for-success model in that.
Supervisor Peters?
Thank you. I'm much in agreement with Patrick. I think if the department is telling us that they could better use the money elsewhere, then they're supposed to be the experts, and that's what we want to do. And what I have read is that the program that's been put together by staff is the best model. Not to say that, and if we, as I said before, and if we decide to go forward, that we do an RFP. And St. John's may or may not win that RFP, but I think the audit of St. John's needs to continue to go forward, so that if they do win the RFP, that all the bases are cleared, and they, there's no question about the finances as to whether they can qualify to receive county money. But I know I'm repeating myself, but I just think we have to believe in what we already agreed to fund in June and see how it works. And it might not work. We don't know. We have to, but we can't continually undermine the program we've already agreed to. That's kind of where I am.
Supervisor Frost?
Okay. Okay, I'll just, maybe to echo a few comments I made earlier, that in my view, we've had, you know, many community partners over the years to address many community needs, certainly in the realm of addressing homelessness for women and children, families. We've had partners, and certainly, St. John's and Volunteers America are two of those that have been partners for many, many years. And it just seems to me that, as we've had this conversation, we somehow, by funding additional transitional beds, that, how that could equate to either detracting or undermining what we've already done. We've funded that, we've supported that, and for this community to say that, just because, you know, we have a plan, that we're not breaking that plan, we're supplementing that. And so if we want to have additional transitional vocational beds for, in a program area that we know that it works, I guess we can disagree about that. I believe that it works. And for a program, again, that has grown, obviously, a number of beds, which those don't come easily in any respect, I don't, you know, whatever classification, whether it be emergency shelter, permanent supportive housing, transitional, those are all challenges in this community. And I just, it seems to me that if this board chooses to supplement some of those program areas, whether that's what staff recommends or not, I appreciate it. I respect staff's recommendation, but I think to the point I made here, you know, what we're embarking upon, we're not undermining that by supplementing funding. It was, that, to me, is a contrary argument, because, again, we have the ability to fund something that works, and I think that, and we know serves women and children, probably a thousand women and children go through that program in any given year. And I just think that it would be wise for this county to, again, whether St. John's in a competitive process, I'm certainly, it seems to me that that's, you know, where we have to go with this, if we're going to choose to fund some additional transitional beds, is go down the RFP. I guess I would suggest that we ought to do that, and do that expeditiously, and see what that brings, because I do think that we're going to be talking here, I imagine, in the next few weeks, about winter shelter and what happens with that. We're going to struggle with how we cite a full shelter, a full-service shelter. We're probably going to struggle about where we find permanent housing for people in this community. Those are all challenges, I think, this board and the staff, and certainly this community are up to tackling. But I guess I just don't see, for a program that has built a foundation in this community of serving homeless women and children with a certain approach, that, you know, people can argue about that, and you can say, "Well, we want housing first, or we want low barrier." I'm a believer, and I've said this before in conversations we've had about this item, going back to last fall, that I don't believe there's just one pathway. And, again, I think this board can choose to say that we want programs that may have a stronger, cleaner, sober component than others. It may be transitional versus diversion or permanent supportive housing, but to a point that Supervisor Serna made earlier, I believe we need all of those things. We can't have them all, because we don't have the funding that goes behind them, but we have the ability. We've already roped off the money here. I believe we've got to, you know, with some urgency, put out an RFP and see what the marketplace brings. It may bring us St. John's and a whole host of others. It may not. But I just got to believe that, until we know what else we put in place and have funded is, works, why would we abandon something that does? And that's the point I make. So I'm prepared to support going forward with an RFP expeditiously, and would be supportive of a motion to do that today. So Supervisor Kennedy, Serna, and Frost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I have a question of the chair, just so I understand, because, I mean, you're right, I mean, we're not diverting from the plan. I guess, though, I guess the question that I have is, we have an opportunity to augment the plan in the most efficacious way as possible, and we're being told by staff that that would be something other than this. I mean, I, you know, we're not, I mean, we have an opportunity to build on the plan in the best possible way, so I'm just, that's where I'm having the disconnect.
And I gather that. I guess I just would respond to that, you know, in opening the doors we have, and to build upon that, some of those we haven't even got in place. We may not have them in place before the fiscal year is out. We may have savings in those accounts, ultimately, to get there. It seems to me that, for this year, and maybe we've got to just keep the focus on that, for this year, though, you know, we're already full quarter into the fiscal year, that maybe as a part of a transition, recognizing that, you know, St. John's certainly has fundraising capacity to, over time, maybe to absorb this, I don't know. I'm not going to speak for them, but it seemed to me that, as we open the doors and build on those things, even if we put more money into some of those areas, I'm not so sure we would expend the money, because we don't have those systems in place yet, and I don't think we're detracting by funding for this. So maybe, you know, the question certainly posed is one that will be answered over time, but, yeah, yeah.
Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost?
Thank you. I guess I had a similar question as to Supervisor Kennedy, and that is, if we decide to give direction to staff today to develop an RFP process, I'm looking at it now from the standpoint of how narrow or wide do we make the target of the RFP? And I think we've all said it in one way, shape, or form in the past, our, you know, our allegiance is to helping the most people that we can, whether they be families or individuals, male or female. And I, you know, as someone that has repeatedly acknowledged the great work that's gone into, now two years of work, to get us to where we are, and we're at the precipice of implementation, which is great, I'm kind of looking at, you know, an RFP process as an opportunity to put it out there. How, you know, how best can your organization assist us with augmenting the plan? And is maybe, maybe you have a response that comes and comes back and says, "Well, we can help out in this fashion, in terms of, we can help this many mothers with children, or we can help this many single men, or, you know, or this many transition-age youth." But I guess at this point, I'm kind of interested in if, again, if their votes are here for an RFP process, that we keep it fairly wide with an eye towards efficacy. And that doesn't preclude St. John's from competing, it doesn't preclude a whole host of others, quite frankly, from competing. And we may uncover something that we didn't know existed, in terms of a real, sound complement to the work that we've done so far.
Okay, Supervisor Frost?
I appreciate Supervisor Kennedy's comments relating to process and making good government decisions. And it seems like, to me, that we are still working through a process that we have not been able to complete, and that being, trying to identify, get answers, and receive information from St. John's, and identify what they need, what their need is, and what do we need. I'm not sure how to go out for an RFP if we're, at the same time, the staff is telling us, making recommendations that we don't need transitional housing, and there may be other, more compelling needs, like preventing homelessness and attending to those working poor that are on the edge of homelessness. I like, I agree that, or I concur with Supervisor Kennedy's comments relating to clear direction and a process that makes it easier to fund results. And I have the impression there has been some challenges in this working relationship in the past. I'm not sure how we can go out for an RFP if we're not sure what we want or need. I'm trying to figure that out. How do we, just, are we just going to go out for an RFP? I mean, when we don't, I'm not sure how we can do that responsibly. I almost feel like we need more information in order to identify what that looks like, and then, there, you know, I have in my mind that maybe St. John's can, maybe there's something they can do that they weren't thinking about doing that will help us, you know? Maybe there's another way they can help us outside that box that they're in with transitional housing. Maybe there's another branch of what they do that could be, could grow their effort. I don't know. But I think, before we can go out for an RFP, I don't know, how do we do that, if we don't really feel like we'd, if our staff is recommending that we don't need what we're going out for? So I'm struggling, I'm struggling with that. I'm compassionate to St. John's, still struggling with the fact that St. John's didn't come back after not getting that bid for the other RFP. I guess, I'm concerned that our, you know, it's difficult to move forward on something when we don't have more information and more answers relating to a clear direction moving forward.
Maybe to get this down to the simplest question, then, is that, to your point, and it's been raised in different ways by comments by all members of this board, is, if this board doesn't believe or want additional transitional beds, then the RFP would be something different. If it is that, over the course of, you know, whatever period of time, even if we're just remaining portion of the last three quarters of this fiscal year, that, you know, we would continue down that path and would, you know, seek transitional beds, and then, you know, see where we go with the other programs, and maybe go for a broader RFP at some juncture that would take a longer process and be more broadly responded to, probably. And so I think that is the question, though. That's the question here before, is that if we want to go to an RFP, to your point, if we know that's what we want, and we're willing to seek that, then we can give that direction. If we don't, then we can say, go out and, you know, kind of give us what might look more broadly for an RFP, and that would be a different kind of a process. So I think it kind of boils down to that choice today or very shortly. So, I mean, and again, based upon staff recommendation, or members, or have come to conclusion that, you know, that's not, we don't want those 19 units of transitional housing, because we don't think we need them, or whatever, there's higher needs, then that would be clear, because then we wouldn't, I think that going to an RFP would be a whole different conversation for a whole other morning or afternoon. So that's kind of my take.
I have a question for counsel.
Sure.
Are we well within our authority today to give direction to staff to move forward with an RFP, and give some specificity to it?
It has been agendized for direction of what next steps would be, so the more you clarify what you would like to see return, I think you're within that agendized.
Okay. So, we've all weighed in, so I guess, if we're going to go down and entertain, if there's a desire to do an RFP, what that's going, what people want it to look like. So Supervisor Kennedy, you punched up first.
I actually like Supervisor Serna's idea a lot. I just, from a staff perspective, who have done a lot more of these than I have, what's that look like? I mean, is there a way to accomplish that?
Well, there are any number of ways you could give us direction on how to frame a request for proposals in this context. You could simply give us the authority, based on your discussion and based on the objectives of the plan that you've already approved. We could then establish what the criteria would be for evaluating proposals. We could put any number of conditions on the contract related to that.
Supervisor Peters and I are not serving on that committee.
We checked that pause.
You read our mind. I think what, part of that is, we can structure it, it's more, what is it that we're procuring? So that's the question that comes in. You can leave it fairly broad. We do have our objectives. We could construct, a suggestion will be, we can put that out, that these are the four initiatives that the board's interested in, give us a proposal, right? I'm looking back, make sure they agree with me. But you could do it that broad, you can give that broad of a direction, or you could say, of those initiatives, one, two, three, or four, which one you want. But what I heard Supervisor Serna say was, is very intriguing, that we have a plan, and it could be something that we haven't thought about, that somebody could come back and say, "Here's a different idea, here's something different." I think Supervisor Frost, you said that. Could be St. John's, it could be somebody else that comes back with that. It gives us the maximum flexibility, rather than getting us locked into 19 units for this much.
Yeah, I guess the way I'm looking at it is, and I know this is very, very general, but it's like, whatever helps the most amount of people, and that complements the plan that we've already spent a lot of time and energy on.
Would it be possible for the department to throw their hat in the ring and explain how they would spend?
how they would spend it if they had that? I mean...
That could certainly be an option as well. I mean, staff would probably, we would be more than happy to put our heads together and identify some of these priority areas.
Since we heard that they would spend it in a different way, but we don't know what that is, so. That could work for me.
Okay, Susan, go ahead. I didn't know, he saw the floor, so you went, any else?
Well, he didn't want to argue with me.
No, I guess not. He didn't want to be on the committee either himself.
I know. So Patrick, maybe make a motion, or Phil, you know, I forget who said what down there.
All right. So I guess I would move that we direct staff to move forward with an RFP process that generally seeks to serve the most people. And that could be people described as families, people as individuals, male, female, no limits on age. And then the second major part to that is to have a keen eye towards how it complements or perhaps even fills a void in the five initiatives that we've been moving forward with for the last two years.
That's adequate language, I would second that.
Is that clear enough?
That's very clear, no, I get. Do we still want to have this pay-for-success model incorporated?
I think that's definitely...
That's a given?
What I would like to do is not tie it in so it's a requirement, but I would like part of the process to be for us to reach out and see and evaluate...
Fair competition for it.
Got it. Understood.
Motion, in a second.
Did Patrick second?
Yes, he did.
The motion carries with Supervisor Natoli voting no.
Okay. There was one other component, and are you reporting back on the other aspects of this? Sorry. You asked for another 30 days on the other issues.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yes, part of the other request is for us to come back to you in 30 days, so that'll be October 31st. I would like to give you a status report on our work with St. John's.
Okay, all right, that's understood then, okay. All right, that's all on the public agenda. We do have a number of speakers that signed up off agenda and have been very patient, so we appreciate you being with us. And I'll take these in the order they were handed, and if there are others that came in that wish to address it, we'll take it. I'm going to, I think for, as I've done in the past, we allow up to 15 minutes on one topic area, so I'll put 15 up there, and if you don't use that all, I've got four speakers here, rather than just give three minutes for each one, let's just do that. And first is Alicia Lee, and Elsie Taylor, and then Victor Krylov, and then Helen Harris. And you may have other speakers as well, but, so, that's the order they were giving to me. Hi, Alicia.
Hi, how you doing today?
Very good.
My name is Alicia. Well, I'm here today on behalf of SEIU 2015, our union, and I'm here today wondering, when are we going to get a contract signed? And when are we going to get a raise? We've been making $10.80 an hour, and I've done the math over and over and over, and I don't see where I'm going to be able to retire on that, nor am I going to be able to start a 401K plan. You know, we can barely live. I can barely pay my rent. You know, and we're losing our houses and our homes behind not making enough money. And what is it that we need to do to get you guys to understand that we, as caregivers, deserve a whole lot more than you're giving us? We're responsible for people's lives, and that's a big deal. You guys should give us a fair contract. We're not asking for a whole lot. I mean, $15 an hour is minimum wage already. We deserve it. When we go into these houses, you expect us to go in there and take good care of these clients, and that's what we do. These clients depend on us to come in there and take good care of them. I've worked as a CNA, I've also worked as an LVN, you know, so what's the difference? I did more work as a CNA than I did an LVN, and I got paid more money as an LVN than I did as a CNA. I can give a shot here and there for $32 an hour, but I go into someone's house, I'm still responsible for their meds, I'm still responsible for their ADLs, and I get $10.80 an hour. It's not fair. And I just want you to think about that today. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Okay, next, Elsie, and then Victor.
Hi, my name is Elsie, and I concur with everything that she's saying, but I want to add to it, that some of these people's homes that we go into, some of them, that's all they have is us that's coming in there. And when we get up in there, and we don't get enough hours as it is for you guys to even think, or anybody to think about cutting something, instead of giving something, and we barely making it with what we getting already. And some of us have to have more than one client to even try to even make rent, because of simple fact that we're not getting paid enough. And then you think about if it was your parent, or you, when you get old, and somebody want to come up in your house and take care, you would want them to be compensated for the work that they do, or your mother, or your grandmother, or grandfather, or whoever. You know, it's not fair to us, and we go in there, we try to keep these people as much dignity as possible, because you think about it, if they have to come from their, their homes, and have to go into a facility, which I'd have worked in a facility as well, there's not enough staffing in there. They're not even getting enough money for people. You could be in there, say like you giving somebody a shower or something, one of your lights on your hall go off. You can't hear a light go off because there's nobody else there, or you know, somebody is on the floor or something. So for somebody to be talking about taking something instead of giving us something, and we try to keep these people, we should be respected, and getting paid to do the job that we do. And because a lot of us go into places and work more than hours that we allowed to work, that we get paid for working for, because it takes longer. And if you realize, the older people get, the more hours they need. You could go with somebody, and you start out with so many hours, and them hours stay like that, but they age, and they age, and their health is getting poorer and poorer, but you working harder and harder, but you not being compensated for what you're doing. I think it's very unfair, and they'll need to step up and give us what we need, and to keep these people in their home, so they can keep as much dignity as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Elsie. Okay, Elsie's followed by Victor, and then Helen, who's the last one I have signed up. Good afternoon, Victor.
Good afternoon, my name is Victor, and in my brief address to the members of the board, I'd like to stress out not just the importance of work people do for our seniors and our people who need help, who can support themselves, and who can take care of themselves, I'm stressing out the needs of caregivers. And at this point, I want to tell that these people are feeling a little bit deprived at this point, because for the work they do, they just get paid a little bit less than all the categories of workers, and, yeah, the millions of people who work in different businesses or industries, and the people who work for, as providers, they'd like to feel themselves the equal to the other people, to the other workers. And they need just decent pay, appropriate healthcare program, and the plan for the retirement plan, more or less supportive. And at this point, I'd like to ask the board members to consider, while you are making decisions regarding to the financing, in times of scarcity of budget, I understand, take into consideration that these people are not worse, not better, they are equal. They should be treated equally, and to express our appreciation of what they do for our society. So it's in your hand to find out the means and sources of financing, additional financing for this program, and to, well, to express your opinion and your support to these people. Appreciate your time and efforts, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. And then Helen, so Helen's the last one I have signed up, if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, otherwise Helen will be the last one on the side. Hi, Helen.
Hi, how are you?
Fine, good to see you.
I came here a year ago, and by chance, I went to visit a friend of mine. We were neighbors about, and this is a story, old story, I told you guys the same thing. But I was so passionate when I came before you, and because I had gone to visit her, and she had become a handicap. And as I would go and visit her, she needed help. Now, she had an in-support service worker, but she wasn't doing that much, I mean, she was doing a lot, but she needed extra help. And I was traveling 30 miles a day to go and visit her, and it, you know, got to be pretty expensive for me, so I signed up to be an IHSS support service worker, to defray any costs that I might have, gas, just gas. So it wasn't necessarily money that I was concerned about, but I was concerned about her dignity and her self-respect. I had stood with her 45 years ago, and I saw her breaking down. And then as I worked for her, I saw myself breaking down too. Because that compassion that I have for humanity came into play. And some nights, I'd go home crying, not only for her, but for myself. When I realized, because when I first got, it wasn't about the money, but when I realized that the money that I was making was not commensurate to the amount of time and energy and care that I was putting in for her, and I hadn't gotten into talking with all these nice people, but then when I got into connecting to SEIU, then I'm standing in solidarity with them right now, as I was back when. When I stood before you guys last year, I'm sorry to say you guys, because I really do respect the panel, so I don't mean to, you know...
We've been called worse.
Okay, okay, well, I'm just going to be me.
That's fine, Kelly.
Okay, thank you, thank you. But in solidarity, you know, I was thinking, at that time, I hollered out, and I'm sorry I did, because I said, "Give us an ear, please, give us an ear." And at that time, I had hope. But along with everything else that's happening, you know, in our world right now, I feel like a nonentity. And God knows, I want to have hope. I want to have hope. And it's not about me, I mean, I say "we," the voice, we want to have hope. I don't know, I don't know what you do when you go outside of this panel right here, but when you go back to your offices, when you talk, whatever power you have, I'm not asking for equality, I'm not. Equity is what we want. We want a piece of that pie. $10.80 isn't going to give us dignity. And every time we come up here and ask, "Please hear us, please listen to us, please give us an ear." Compassion is a mighty big word. It's a powerful word. I'm humbled before you today, and asking you for compassion. I'm pleading. So I had a lot of things I was going to say when I get upstairs to hear this all gone. What I do, I say our voices are crying out, not for equality, but for equity. And again, I say, please hear us. And whatever you can do when you leave this panel, think about us. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you for sharing once again. Okay, Abdul, you got in under the wire.
Yes, man, huh? All right. Abdul Awad, Home Care Sacramento. I've been here before, I've been in your office before. I have the pleasure to meet you and take a selfie with you.
You had to take it.
It's been a while, you guys, been coming back here every other day, and we wait, you know, just to hear our story. Everybody here has had a story. But we said enough is enough. Next year, the minimum wage is going to be $11. We're going to go back to the minimum wage. We are 24,000 members in Sacramento. We are an army, but we deserve some dignity, respect. Average home care provider making in Sacramento? $18,000, $18,000 a year. Who could live on $18,000 a year? Versus, God forbid, if we decide to give up our patient, our client, to the state and the county, it will cost $60,000, $70,000, $80,000 a year. So we are saving money, we saving life, we keeping the loved one at home and safe, but we deserve some dignity and respect. We are tired and sick to keep coming back and bother you guys. Our contract is open now, we're looking for fair contracts. It took us almost a year, 40 years ago, to get 40 cents, I was one of the bargaining team, 40 cents increase 2012. Guess what? We just came back from the trobino blocks when Arnold took 4% and 4% 2008, 2009. So we're always on the trobino blocks. They call us a babysitter. We're not a babysitter. We put so many hats every morning. My brother Robert right here, he changed feeding tube every morning. Each time he would go vacation and leave his house, leave his client with his kid, he have to pay somebody maybe $30, $40 an hour to do the same job. We are CNA, we are doctor, LVN, home care, whatever you want to call us, we keeping the loved one at home, we keeping safe, we saving the county, and the state, and the federal money, but we deserve some dignity, we deserve some livable wages. We're not asking for much. $10.80, nobody could live on $10.80. Look the inflation, look the gas, the housing. Now it's going to take us another, maybe a year, our contract is open now, to get another 40 cents. It's a baby steps. We have to fight almost for four, five years to get the overtime. Have you ever heard in your lifetime, people doesn't get overtime? Google it. For 40 years, we didn't get overtime. For 40 years, we didn't get travel time, we didn't get waiting time. Why? We are average American, average citizen. As a matter of fact, we go extra mile for the patient. So once again, guys, I know you got sick of me, I've been here so many times, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the job you do, please pay attention to us, please pay attention to us. Our contract is open, it's in your hand, and guess what? We're not going nowhere. We keep coming back, and we could tip the scale for the election too. That's not a threat, just to let you know, we are 24,000 people here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Abdul. Okay, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and I know that we'll continue to, you know, work at the negotiating table, and again, appreciate your comments and your service to others in our community, so it is important. All right, that's the only speakers I have then, so I'll bring back to the board any adjournments. I know, yes, Mr....
I just had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, comments, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to publicly thank John Wheat and all his staff, as we all had a chance to see last week, J.D. Powers, I guess, registered their vote for SMF as best at their scale, best airport in the nation, so that's something that this entire organization should be proud of, but especially, as I made mention of in social media, all of our devoted public servants that make our airport system what it is, and certainly our international airport. So congratulations to everyone that contributed to that selection as number one ranked in the United States for our size.
Thanks, Will.
I just, after looking at Supervisor Serna all day, I'd like to adjourn in his memory.
I'm feeling that way, let me tell you.
Okay, Supervisor Frost, anything? Supervisor Peter? Supervisor Peters, anything else? Mr. Gill, anything?
Nope.
Okay. Before we do adjourn, just wanted to acknowledge that we're going to adjourn in memory of Michael Turner, and also wanted to ask that we adjourn another former longtime employee of Sacramento County, Lowell Bowman, who served as the Assistant Assessor for Sacramento County in his latter years. He actually started with the Assessor's Office in 1963, worked there until October 1995. He was a very dedicated county employee, someone I knew, his wife, late wife, Terry Bowman, actually worked as Secretary District Five back when my predecessor Toby Johnson was supervisor, but also carried over and worked for me for a bit of time in the early part of my years as a supervisor. He had three children, Carrie, Michael, and Craig, some of them in these chambers, different times for different items, they've been for the board, and many, many grandchildren. He had some health challenges in recent years, but never gave up the spirit of, certainly of friendship, but also of wanting to live and have a productive life. And so he passed away a couple of days ago, and so I'd ask that on behalf of this board, we adjourn in memory of Michael Turner and Lowell Bo Bowman. And with that, if there's no other adjournments, then we will adjourn in their memory.